All right, thank you so much for joining us for tonight's April the 12th Fort Mill Town Council Regular Meeting. You can view online at www.fortmillSouthCarolina.com/livemeeting. We're very happy to have all of us, full staff on council, available this evening for the first time in a long time. So, very happy to see each of you and I've missed you very, very much. With that, we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and Trudy's going to give us our invocation this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trudy?
That is correct. Well, we thank you for such a beautiful day today. Please be with us tonight as we make decisions that will be the best interest for our community. We also ask that you continue to keep your hand on the Leslie family as well as the Addams Family. We ask all of this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. Trudy, thank you for your prayer and I do think it is appropriate that we have a moment to reflect on the tragedies in the last week. It seems like it's been a year, more than a year of tragedies, but seven people were lost in Rock Hill and then the two Armstrong brothers here in Fort Mill lost to a home fire. It just, it's just unbelievable, the types of grieving that are going on inside our community. So, thank you all for keeping their families and everyone in your prayers. Thank you. Council members, you have received the minutes of the March 22nd, 2021 Town Council meeting. Do we have any changes, deletions, or additions? I have a motion and a second for approving the minutes of March 22nd. Everyone that, if we'll go ahead and vote, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. All right, thank you. Public comment pursuant to Section 2-46 of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill: Any citizen of the town may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign in outside of council chambers prior to the start of the meeting. To maintain social distancing, citizens will only be allowed into council chambers one at a time to give their comments. Please note that while we are indeed making progress with vaccinations, we will continue to use good common sense and socially distance so that we can protect anyone that would like to visit our meetings. Davy, do we have anyone signed in for this evening?
No, Mayor.
Okay. All right, then we'll move straight away into presentation number one. Presenting the 2021 South Carolina Strawberry Festival plans, Jacana Hester, I believe, is joining us with a presentation.
Hello, good evening.
Hi, Jacana.
Hi. The town and the festival committee, we are so excited about our final slate of events planned for the festival this year. Some of our contests have already begun. They began in March. And then our festival week will be Friday, April 23rd through Saturday, May 1st. We have planned a fun, family-friendly event, different events spread throughout the week, all around town where we can socially distance and continue to follow COVID-19 guidelines. And we are committed to keeping safety as our priority while providing, engaging events for our community and promoting community pride and just keeping the spirit of the festival alive. And again, as I said, our festival week is Friday, April 23rd through Saturday, May 1st. We're going to kick off our festival week on Friday, April 23rd with our opening ceremony and poster reveal. It will be pre-recorded and shown on that Friday at 8:30 a.m. And we will be doing the opening ceremony and poster reveal from Springs Farm Strawberry Fields. And that will feature our Mayor Savage and our council, our town manager Davy Broom, our strawberry queens, our mascot Berry, and Ron Edwards and Janaye Thero of Springs Farm, as well as the Fort Mill History Museum's Executive Director, Kristia Humbert, and of course, our 2021 festival poster artist Debbie Witsett. She has really created a beautiful poster again for us this year, so we cannot wait to be able to share that with everyone. And those will be available for purchase during the festival week and after the festival week. And Mayor Savage will be sharing different highlights about our week during the opening ceremony as well as doing the reveal. And this ceremony is going to be shown on our South Carolina Strawberry Festival and our town Facebook pages, which is @fortmillsc and @scstrawberryfestival. And it will also be on our festival website, scstrawberryfestival.com, our town YouTube channel, @fortmilltv, and Comporium Channel 115, beginning at 8:30 a.m. on that Friday. And one of our contests that we're very excited about is our strawberry cooking classes contest. And we are accepting entries for that now through Monday, April 19th. So, you have one more week to get your entries in. And what we're asking the public to do is just submit a paragraph describing your best or worst cooking experience to us. And then our festival judges will pick 28 winners to attend one of two strawberry cooking classes provided by the Foodie School in Fort Mill. And those classes sound so delicious. Our first one, Sunday, April 25th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. And it's called Sweet on Strawberries. And you will be able to make a sweet biscuit strawberry shortcake and a strawberry rubbered lattice pie. And then Tuesday, April 27th, from 6:30 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., they're going to have a farm-to-table cooking class called Strawberry Patch Picks. And you'll be able to make crostini with ricotta and spicy strawberry salsa and a strawberry balsamic roasted Brussels sprouts, sweet onion rice with strawberry glazed chicken kebabs, and strawberries and cream puffs. So, that's just a very fun and exciting event that we want everyone to participate in. So, submit those entries to us. Again, those need to be in by Monday, April 19th at 5:00 p.m. And then next, on Friday, April 23rd, we will have our Little Miss South Carolina Strawberry Festival pageant. We have 23 contestants for this event. And it will be held at the Courtyard by Marriott and Kingsley at 7:00 p.m. that evening. And the doors open at 6:00 p.m. But this is for family members only. We do not have tickets available for the public due to capacity restrictions. We want to be able to make sure that the girls' family members can be live to see the contestants this evening. But we are going to livestream the event and it will be on our South Carolina Strawberry Festival Facebook page and our town YouTube. And you'll be able to join us as we crown our Tiny Miss Strawberry Shortcake, our Little Miss Strawberry Shortcake, our Miss Strawberry Princess, and our Miss Strawberry Festival Junior Team. And of course, we're following COVID guidelines for this by allowing our contestants only two guests for each pageant. And then socially distant seating in the auditorium. Any meetings they've had, they've been following COVID guidelines for that. We'll have COVID signage throughout the venue. And then any food distributed by a caterer following COVID guidelines. But we are very excited to have 23 contestants for that. And then on Saturday morning, April 24th, at 8:00 a.m., we will have our inaugural Strawberry Sprint and Stroll 5K. It's a family-friendly event. It's going to start and end on Confederate Street in downtown Fort Mill. And this race, you will be able to, there's a virtual option and an in-person option for this. And they already have 210 participants registered. And the first 250 are actually guaranteed a race shirt and a medal. And they are following COVID guidelines for this as well with staggered start times. When you register, you'll be able to pick a start time. And they do have a cap on the number of registrants with separate start and finish lines. And then, of course, you know, COVID social distancing guidelines in place. On Saturday evening, April 24th, we're going to have our Teen Miss and Misses pageant. And that will be at the Courtyard by Marriott and Kingsley also at 7:00 p.m. And the doors open again for family members only at 6:00 p.m. And this pageant will be livestreamed as well on our South Carolina Strawberry Festival Facebook page and our town YouTube. And we are very excited that we will be able to see 26 young ladies compete for the Teen Miss and Misses pageant. And they have already been practicing and we know that's going to be a great event as well. And what's special about this year is due to our 2019 queens not being able to say farewell last year because of the pageant having to be canceled, they're going to be able to take part in this year's pageant and be able to do their farewell along with our 2020 queens. And of course, we're following COVID guidelines, the same as with the Little Miss pageant for this event. On Sunday, April 25th, at 8:00 a.m. to noon, we're having the strawberry pancake breakfast. And it's going to be at the Ann Springs Closed Greenway Gateway Canteen. The breakfast will include a served buffet of scrambled eggs, house-made bacon, and pancakes topped with the fresh Springs Farm strawberries. Water and coffee are included and additional beverages are available for purchase at the breakfast. Tickets for the event, Greenway members is $10 and non-members is $12. And all you have to do is visit scstrawberryfestival.com and there's a link on the pancake breakfast page to purchase your tickets. And right now, 412 tickets have been sold with the first two time slots being sold out. So, make sure you get those tickets now because I'm sure they will all go away very soon as everybody's looking forward to that. And of course, we have, you know, they have COVID guidelines there as well. And what you will do, you'll purchase tickets for a staggered entry time so that only so many people are there at each time slot. They have outdoor seating to accommodate social distancing guidelines. And of course, their caterer, they're prepares and packages the food following all guidelines. And they always have signage reminders at all of their events. And we're happy to partner with the Greenway for this. On Sunday, April the 25th, from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., on the South Carolina Strawberry Festival Facebook page, we're having a virtual car show. Because we couldn't bring our in-person car show to everyone this year, we want you to bring your cars to us virtually. So, when we make our virtual car show post that morning, all you'll do is in the comments, you'll post a picture of your car throughout the day from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And we will choose three winners to get gift cards to local businesses. And we will announce those winners at 8:00 p.m. on our South Carolina Strawberry Festival social media. And then also on Sunday, April 25th, we are having the strawberry baby contest for ages birth to four years old. And all you have to do is submit photos of your adorable babies dressed in strawberry attire or a strawberry-themed picture. And we're going to post all of the pictures that we receive on our festival Facebook page. And we invite the public to vote on their favorites for these. And we have already got some just adorable pictures, so I really look forward to seeing all the pictures that are going to come in for that. And that is something you do not want to miss. But the three most Facebook likes wins prizes for first, second, and third place. And we will be accepting those through April the 20th. So, make sure you get yours in in time to participate in that. And then get all of your family and friends to like your picture on Sunday, April 25th. On Monday, April the 26th, we're having the South Carolina Strawberry Festival photo contest. And what we want you to do is submit past years' South Carolina strawberry festivals. And we're going to pick our top 10 and post those to our South Carolina Strawberry Festival Facebook page. And this is another contest that we are allowing the public to vote on. So, you're going to pick first, second, and third place for this photo contest. And the winners will win gift cards to local businesses as well. And it's already been fun seeing the pictures, everybody's sending in. So, just continue to send those in so we can see all the past South Carolina strawberry festivals. And then we're having a strawberry art contest. We're asking for elementary, middle, and high school students to submit artwork to Loom by Friday, April the 16th at 4:00 p.m. We're inviting area public, private, and homeschooled students to submit their art to the contest illustrating love where you live during strawberry season. And winners will be recognized at a special open house on Wednesday, April 28th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Loom co-working. And also on display during that open house is going to be some professional works from some area abstract artists. And we are giving prizes for each division, first, second, and third place for each division. So, we are excited to see all of the talented artwork from our community for this as well. And then once all the artwork is submitted, you will be able to view it anytime that week, Monday, April 26th through Friday, April the 30th. But our open house will be that Wednesday, April 28th. On Tuesday, April 27th, we're having the South Carolina Strawberry Festival Golf Tournament with a welcome reception at 8:00 a.m. And then a shotgun start at 9:30 a.m. And it's going to be held at the Springfield Golf Club here in Fort Mill. The registration includes a tournament gift, breakfast and lunch, and four drink tickets per player. And we're very happy to say that all of our sponsorships and registrations are full. And we just thank everyone for their support. And we thank our breakfast providers, Bojangles and Knowledge Per Coffee. Lunch will be provided by Subway here in Fort Mill. And then our beverages are being provided by Rock Hill Coca-Cola Bottling Company and Comer Distributing Company. And of course, you know, we're following COVID guidelines during this event. The golfers will have two per cart. There's a cap of 132 golfers. Breakfast and lunch is prepackaged and served following COVID guidelines. We're going to have COVID signage at the event. Masks are required anywhere where social distancing is not possible. And drinks are being served by Springfield Golf Club. On Wednesday, April 28th, we're having a strawberry business showcase. And we are going to be featuring our local restaurants and merchants. They all have strawberry festival products such as food and drinks and decorative items. And they will be featured throughout the day on our social media and they will also be on our festival website the entire week. So, make sure you follow us on social media and visit our festival website so you can see all that they have to offer. And they've been sending in all of that and it looks amazing, so make sure you check that out. And then on Thursday, April the 29th, we are announcing our Second Annual Strawberry Idol winner. Right now, we are taking entries for this contest through Friday, April 23rd at 5:00 p.m. But on Thursday, April 29th, we will announce the winners of this year's idol contest. And we have a special performance by Laura Rae Robinson. She was an idol runner-up last year. But she will do a special performance and then we will announce the winners following that. But please submit your video entry to us by Friday, April 23rd. And we'll be giving out really great prizes for this for first, second, and third place. And our first-place winner will be able to sing one song during the opening ceremony of the 2022 South Carolina Strawberry Festival. So, we are excited about that. And then on Friday, April 23rd through Saturday, May 1st, we're having a strawberry decorating contest. We want our town to decorate our town for the 12th Annual South Carolina Strawberry Festival. And we're having two contests, one for residents and one for businesses. And for our residents, we're just asking you to decorate a mailbox or a wreath for your front door strawberry-themed. And we will be giving out prizes for the best strawberry decorations in Fort Mill. Our judges will pick first, second, and third-place winners for the best wreath and the best mailbox to win gift cards to local businesses. And all you have to do is submit a photo to me by Friday, April 23rd at 5:00 p.m. And then for our businesses, we're asking them to decorate a window display, a door wreath, or other area in their business strawberry-themed. And all they have to do is just let me know they're participating. And then our festival judges will visit their location and pick our first, second, and third-place winners for that. And you will receive trophies for that event. So, just make sure you let us know you are participating and we can't wait to see what you are going to do. And we're very happy to add the strawberry music flick and food to our lineup. This is going to be in Walter Elijah Park from 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. On Friday, April the 30th, there's going to be a concert by Cassette Rewind from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And our movie is going to be from 9:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. And the way we determine the movie to be shown is we had a Facebook vote last week. We gave the public five movies to choose from and it was a very, very close vote, but The Goonies won out and that's what we're going to be showing that night. The Greatest Showman came in second, so we hope to be able to show that at a later time. But for this event, we are going to be showing The Goonies. Food trucks will be on site and from 5:00 to 9:30 p.m. And only non-alcoholic beverages will be sold. And we're just asking everyone to bring a blanket or chair and just enjoy a beautiful spring evening with your family and friends. And of course, we want everyone to follow COVID-19 guidelines while attending. Our food trucks will be placed with adequate distance to allow serving lines to be socially distanced. And our food trucks follow D-HEC and COVID guidelines. We'll have signage reminders at the event. And then our event promotion will include expected COVID guidelines to follow while attending. On Saturday, May 1st, we are ending our week with several events. First off will be our Spring Artisan Market. And we are partnering with the Ann Springs Closed Greenway for this. It's going to be 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on the Gateway Canteen Loom. And it's going to feature handmade items from regional artists and vendors in addition to showcasing offerings from local farms. And they have 60 vendors enrolled currently and a wait list. So, that's going to be really fun to attend. And it's the same thing, you can pre-purchase your tickets ahead of time for a time slot and that allows them to keep the crowd capacity down so that they can follow COVID-19 guidelines. The cost for this is free for Greenway members and non-members pay just the Greenway day-use fee, which is $6 per adult and $4 per child ages 5 to 11. And there's a $5 special event parking fee per car that applies to local attendees. And this, of course, is an outdoor venue to allow for social distancing. The Ann Springs Greenway has handled all of the vendor applications and has made those selections. They will have COVID signage reminders at the event and ask people to wear masks where social distancing is not possible. And they always use COVID guidelines, you know, for all of their events. So, they will do that there as well. And then on Saturday, May 1st, we are having Strawberry Snow Cone Day. So, we want you to get those taste buds ready to enjoy a free strawberry snow cone. Kona Ice will be at various locations around town. They're going to be at Harris Street Park, 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Still Street Park, 12:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. And Veterans Park from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. We want everyone to come out and have a free strawberry snow cone and meet Berry, the South Carolina Strawberry Festival mascot, and our strawberry festival queens. And you can take pictures in front of our special strawberry backdrop and use hashtag @scstrawberryfestival to post them. And we thank Comporium for sponsoring this event. So, make sure you get out and enjoy that. Also, on Saturday, May 1st, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Fort Mill History Museum, we are having the Strawberry Scavenger Hunt. You will pick up your hunt and keepsake pen beginning at 10:00 a.m. at the museum. And you will follow the clues to learn the history of downtown Fort Mill. You'll then be able to email your answers in or you can take your answers back to the museum and also be able to view all that they have to offer at the museum when you turn in your hunt. Then a drawing from all correct answers will be held at 5:00 p.m. to select three winners that will receive prizes that include gift certificates and gift baskets by local businesses. And the museum is also offering a free keepsake magnet to all participants. And they just ask participants to use COVID guidelines as they navigate the hunt around town. And the History Museum is also having a special event called Stroll Through the History of Fort Mill Festivals. And that's going to be on Saturday, April 24th, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And they're going to have a lot of the festival posters on display. And they're even going to have the artists that created some of those there signing those posters and selling them. They're going to have face painting for kids. They're going to have strawberry dessert. And some of the things do cost money, but they are raising money to support the daily operations of the museum. So, make sure you do participate in their events and support the museum. Also, on Saturday, May 1st, at 11:00 AM, the Fort Mill Animal Hospital is hosting our Strawberry Doggy Fashion Show. It's on 204 Main Street in Fort Mill. And we want to see your pups all dressed up in strawberry doggy fashion. And they will be given out prizes for the best strawberry dressed fur babies. And everybody that participates gets a special treat. They will be following COVID guidelines, asking everyone to social distance. It's going to be outdoor in their parking lot. And we will be promoting the COVID guidelines to follow while attending that as well. So make sure you bring those sweet, cute little babies out there dressed in strawberry attire for that fun event. Another exciting event we've had is the strawberry taken makes. And you were able to pre-register for those beginning April the 1st. And they were quickly registered for. We had a certain number of free ones available and they all have been taken. Registration is full for that. But Nailed It has allowed everyone to still be able to purchase one for only $10. And all you have to do is visit scstrawberryfestival.com and click on the link to be able to purchase one of those. And as you can see, they are adorable strawberry taken makes that you'll be able to create at home. And then we're having a contest. All you have to do is submit a photo of your taken make after you have completed it. And we're going to be picking out our top 10 favorites to win prizes for that. So make sure you share your photo of your completed project with us. And I just want to thank our sponsors for the festival this year. They all wanted to continue to support our festival this year, even though we aren't having our usual large festival in the park. So we just thank them for their continued support for what we're doing. And then I also want to thank our event host partners. We are partnering with a lot of community organizations and businesses to help carry out the festival. And we just appreciate all that they are doing to help us provide these fun events for everyone this year. And for all the event information, my email, all of our social media, everything, you can find it at scstrawberryfestival.com. And make sure you do follow the town and the South Carolina Strawberry Festival on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. And please visit our festival website for all the details about all of our events. So you don't miss any of the fun for that. And then I want to thank our South Carolina Strawberry Festival Committee for just really working hard and coming up and making all of these events available to our community this year and just for all they're doing to help us carry these events out well. But thank you. And I just hope everyone will just come out and enjoy the in-person event safely. And just visit our festival website and learn all about all of our events.
Thank you, Jacana. I think that represents an enormous amount of creativity, coordination, and hard work. And I think, given the amount of activities that you've outlined, and I know we will provide all of that information on all our social media outlets. But I do think it's worthy of two seconds just to mention each of the sponsors. So we'd like to thank founders, Comporium, Rakil Coca-Cola, Comer Distributing, Family Trust, State Farm, Rhett Rutland, Domtar, York County Natural Gas, Paradise Home Improvement, Geek Energy, York Electric Cooperative, Hobbs Street Attorneys at Law, Childress Klein, Subway, Bojangles, Simply Jane Formals, Sesam's and Sons Jewelers, and Courtyard by Marriott, along with event host partners, The Springs Farm, Ann Springs Close Greenway, Gateway Canteen at Ann Springs Close Greenway, Fort Mill Community Playhouse, Fort Mill Animal Hospital, Fort Mill History Museum, Fort Mill Economic Partners, Nailed It, Springfield Golf Course, and the Foodie School. These folks work very hard to help the town of Fort Mill sponsor this festival. And it's incredible, given the times that we're living in, to come up with these individual opportunities for so many to participate. So I, for one, would like to thank you for the diligence and the hard work and every committee member as well. Counsel, comment?
Jacana, for the music flick and food, will there be pre-orders for the trucks? I know a lot of the food trucks in town allow for pre-ordering to try to help with minimizing pickup times and waits and so forth.
Not for this event. We're just going to make sure that we have plenty of food trucks so people aren't waiting in line. And also, social distancing reminders out there, just reminding people to stay safe.
Okay. And then the artisan events, are there limited tickets for that or is it unlimited?
They do have a limit, I can answer that. The Springs Close Greenway does have a limit. So you'll need to purchase tickets. But I think they're doing it as people leave, more people can come in. So they've been doing events out there with social distancing and doing a great job. So I'm very confident in their capabilities.
I would just like to say that you all have certainly been working hard to lead the committee. This is a lot.
It's huge.
It's huge.
It's just huge. And it's amazing to come up with that many different activities to entertain so many people in the given circumstance that we are today. So Jacana, my hat's off to you. All right. Jacana, do you have any questions for us?
No, I'm just looking forward to a great week.
All righty, thank you. We appreciate you. Presentation number two, Litter Removal Initiative, Jacqueline Martin.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jacqueline Martin. I'm the Stormwater Management Coordinator here at the Town of Fort Mill. My office is over in the Utilities Department. I'm going to be here talking to you about today just a couple of programs that we've started here at the Town of Fort Mill, our Big Earth Day events that we've got going on, and some other educational events that we've got going on here in the town. This is basically our spring and summer schedule that we have at the moment. I do think that we're going to be adding some more things as time goes on. But we're very excited to present all of these to you guys today. The first one, and the big litter initiative that we were talking about, is we have started a Second Saturday Service program here at the Town of Fort Mill. It is with conjunction, we have our Utilities Department, Stormwater Department, Public Works, people over in Town Hall. We came together as a committee to really help in terms of, you know, keeping our community beautiful and safe for everybody to enjoy. We had our first event, actually, this past weekend on April 10th. And I just want to say thank you to everyone who volunteered, everyone who participated, all of our town employees that were there volunteering. It ended up being such a great event. We had 47 people come out in the community and volunteer to help pick up litter around the town. We had 34 bags of trash collected across 10 different sites. So we definitely had some great effort. We are so excited about that. And again, I cannot thank everyone enough who made our first one so successful. We are going to be having multiples of these throughout the summer. So there will be one, the first one was obviously April. Then we have May, June, July, all the way through September. So definitely keep a lookout for that. The signups are through Sign Up Genius. And they will be listed on the Fort Mill Facebook page, Instagram, and I believe Twitter as well. So if you go through and you go through Sign Up Genius and you enter in your information, we'll have a new signup every single month. So even if you volunteered during this past one, you will have to re-sign up again every single month. But it was such a great success and we're so excited. We definitely, we had a hashtag that we created for this event. It was Pick It Up Pride Fort Mill. We definitely, we want to see what everyone in the town is doing in terms of helping keeping our community clean and beautiful. We want to make sure that you're tagging us in those photos, even not during the times of Second Saturday Service, tag us in what you're doing. We want to see it. We want to see all of the efforts that you guys are putting in. These are just some promotional things that we did in terms of, you know, getting everything together, some safety tips we have for if you're going out and cleaning up your trash and things like that. But it was a great event, so successful. And we are just so excited about the future of this program. The next thing that I'm going to be talking about is one of our Earth Day events. We are doing an Earth Day Adopt a Stream in partnership with the Greenway. So the Stormwater Department, we have partnered with the Greenway in order to bring our personal Adopt a Stream program to a larger scale. Now, at the time that I submitted the presentation, we had 151 people have volunteered for this event. We now have 165 people that have volunteered to help come clean up litter along Steel Creek and other vulnerable waterways here in Fort Mill. And so this event is basically, we're going to have volunteers split up into groups of 15. And they'll all be responsible for multiple access points along Steel Creek and other, around local areas around Fort Mill. And basically, just helping clean up trash, recyclables, all of that good stuff, which, you know, we're improving the water quality, we're protecting our local wildlife, and we're enhancing our recreational areas. We want the Town of Fort Mill to be safe, clean, beautiful, and healthy for everyone to use and just keeping up with the beauty that is our town. And we also have a T-shirt. If you participate, you do get a T-shirt that has the Earth Day Adopt a Stream. It has our Town of Fort Mill logo for the Stormwater Department as well as the Greenway. And I just want to say thank you so much to the Greenway for partnering on this big event. It is on the same day as the Free Admission Weekend for the Greenway. So obviously, in participating, you do get free admission to the Greenway, as do most other people. But we are so excited. This is the first year that we're able to do something like this. So it's definitely very exciting and we're very excited about that. And then for our next Earth Day event, we have the Earth Day Art Contest. We did do an edited version of this last year and we had so much fun. We had such great entries and sharing it on Facebook with everybody. It was virtual due to quarantine last year, but this year we are bringing it back. We are very excited to have physical artwork that will be turned in. We're going to have different age categories. We have a preschool and elementary, middle and high school, and then adults. So it is open to, you know, across the board for all ages. And there's categories for most creative, most informative, and best slogan. The overarching sort of idea of the contest is that you are to create a physical piece of art. It can be digital, photo, painting, markers, you know, whatever it is that you choose for your medium. And you have to make it somehow related to the Town of Fort Mill, have an environmental issue or passion that you want to display in your art. And then you have to come up with a fun and creative slogan that goes along with your picture. So we have the, and then each age category will have three winners and they will receive a prize, all appropriate for ages and everything like that. But we had so much fun with this last year. We're so excited to bring it back. And we will be posting the winners, physically will be displayed in the windows of Town Hall. We will also be posting them on the Town of Fort Mill Stormwater Facebook page and the official town social medias. There are rules to the contest that are all posted online. They're also posted on our town website under the spotlights. And one of the big rules for the contest is that you have to like and follow the Town of Fort Mill Stormwater Facebook page, which is @fortmillstormwater. So if you search that on Facebook, it will come right up. So you do have to make sure that you are liking and following, which also gives you more access to more content in terms of, we do videos, we share words of the day. We have a mascot that we have him go around town and show up at different local businesses. So it's really a whole lot of fun and we're very excited to bring that back this year. And then for the next thing that we're doing is a Facebook Live with the Greenway. And that's going to be on actual Earth Day. So that's going to be an actual Earth Day event. And so basically, as the representative of the Stormwater Department, I'm going to be giving a presentation on the importance of being a good stormwater neighbor. And that's, you know, tips, tricks, pointers, and just education on things that we can do to make sure that we're protecting our local waterways, keeping them clean, keeping storm drains clean, and just limiting any type of pollution in the town. We definitely want to make sure that we're keeping all of that healthy. And we have a mascot, Drippy, the Friendly Water Drop. Some of you may have seen him around town at different events. He's been at the Christmas Tree Lighting, he's been at Strawberry Festival. We've gone into a lot of elementary schools pre-COVID with him. He's a big hit. He will be there as well, dancing along with me and just, you know, having a good time. He's always a hit. We love to bring him everywhere. And then one of the newer events that we are adding, this is a summertime series that we're doing. It is called Stories in Shaved Ice. This is something new that we've never done before, but we are so excited about it. And so during the summer months, we're going to be partnering with Kona Ice Fort Mill. And so we invite families to come out to Walter Elijah Park and enjoy some free shaved ice. And then we're going to be reading some children's stories that teach about water quality, protecting the community, and other environmental topics that affect not just everywhere, but the Town of Fort Mill. Drippy will also be there again. He'll be there to take pictures. And we'll have stickers for everybody. It's going to be a really great time. Those events, they're going to be at Walter Elijah Park, like I said, at 1:30 PM. It'll be June 22nd, July 13th, and August 12th is the days for that. We haven't done anything like this before for educational purposes. But we really wanted to do something to involve families and to involve kids and just keep everybody in the community involved, especially after, you know, this interesting past year that we've had. We weren't allowed to go into schools or do anything like that this year. So we definitely wanted to make sure that we were, you know, including the kids, including families, and getting people, you know, outside to our local parks, but also offer some education opportunities as well. And the three books that we're going to be reading is called, we have The Little Raindrop by Joanna Garvey. We have The Great Big Water Cycle Adventure by Kay Barnham. And then we have Water Up, Down, and All Around by Mandy Rose. Those are the three books that we're going to be reading for the events. As of right now, we only have three for this. But if it really is super popular, we are definitely open to adding more. I'm super excited about this. And like I said, all of the events that we're doing are going to be, you know, with COVID guidelines, of course, in sight. Obviously, with the Greenway, they have their COVID guidelines in place. Anytime that you cannot social distance, wear a mask as well. Definitely, COVID guidelines are a big thing with this. And we want to make sure that everyone's being safe and healthy and protecting themselves. But that's kind of, that's what the Stormwater Department, in terms of events, what we're doing for our spring and summer calendar right now. I'm really excited about this. We're going to definitely try to be adding some more things and keeping them going. As I stated before, the litter initiative for the Second Saturday Service, our next one is going to be on May 8th. So make sure you guys look out for the Sign Up Genius for that on our town social media. You sign up online with your email address and then you will be good to go. You pick your street and you go out there and keep Fort Mill beautiful. And we're so excited. But thank you guys so much for the opportunity to share. I really enjoyed sharing everything with you.
Wonderful, just wonderful. Excellent graphics and great thoughts to get the information out about what our Stormwater Department is all about. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the opportunity to share. I appreciate it.
Great presentation. Counsel, questions, comments?
On the signup, is there ability to do as a group or is it all individual?
Yeah, so you can sign up as a group. So obviously, we have families, you know, mom, dad, and multiple kids. So you can put, you know, number of adults and number of children. And that goes for both the Earth Day Adopt a Stream and for the Second Saturday Service. The signup is both through the same program, Sign Up Genius. It is a program that I believe Fort Mill Schools also uses in terms of signing up for things. So most of the public should be pretty used to using something like that. But you can definitely sign up for multiple people. I will also add that when you're signing up for the Earth Day one, we do ask that you add your T-shirt size so we can make sure you get the correct size T-shirt.
Thank you.
Of course.
I know that the creativity is critical, Jacqueline, because having...
I know, I know that the creativity is critical, uh, Jacklin, because having been a part of Keep Fort Mill Beautiful years and years ago, sustainability's tough, you know, to get people to keep. It's a whole lot easier to watch people throw trash out a window than it is to help, get them to help pick it up. So, uh, and I really believe the people that pick it up are not the ones throwing it out. So thank you for your hard work, and, uh, once again, uh, to those listening in, please stop throwing trash out the windows, use a trash receptacle, keep our town looking beautiful. We appreciate it. Anything else? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll move into presentation number three, Bags to Benches Program. Davy Brum.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I speak on Bags to Benches Program, I would like to make a comment about the Second Saturday Service. Uh, I took part in that this past Saturday, and, uh, I just want to say a big thank you to the committee that pulled that entire program together. Um, Jacklin was a big, a big part of that, uh, Chris Sardelli, uh, Chana Hester, Brian Harris, and Jeanette Kettlewell was a, a driving force behind that as well. And, uh, again, they came up with an idea for sustainability for this Second Saturday Service. Uh, Town staff has been getting a lot, has, have received quite a bit of feedback about litter around town. And so this was our opportunity and our plan to address litter in Fort Mill. And just being there Saturday at the sign up tent and having our volunteers come up and sign up and sign the pledge card and the liability form was just, they were all very happy. The weather was questionable, but they didn't mind. They, they took off out into the, uh, community, and we, we asked them to send back the number of bags that they collected, but each one of them left with a bundle of five bags, each and every person. Um, and so 34 is what was reported, but we actually believe it's, uh, the number was a lot higher than that. So, um, that was the best number that we had added today, but I would imagine it was more than that, and it, it, it addressed, uh, some areas around town, and any one piece of litter that is picked up is positive for Fort Mill. Any, any litter that is, that is removed is a positive for Fort Mill. So I, I can't say enough about the volunteers that actually took time out of their busy schedule to make Fort Mill beautiful. Uh, just want to say a big thank you to each and every one of them. Um, so as, uh, Jacklin was stating, she was providing information on, uh, the month of April and our events that the town is putting on, uh, most everybody associates the month of April with Earth Day. Uh, Earth Day this year is on April 22nd, which is a Thursday. Um, not all of our events, we couldn't have, hold them all on Earth Day, but we held them throughout the month. But one program that we're excited to begin, uh, will be kicked off, uh, we'll kick it off on Earth Day, is the Bags to Benches Program. Um, staff was, uh, requested to look into this program and, uh, see it, uh, the feasibility of us taking part in it. Um, after looking into it, it was, uh, a very, uh, as a program, it felt like we could handle in-house, um, initially. We hope to see it grow over time, but I'd like to give a little bit of information on the Bags to Benches Program. So, uh, it was formerly known as the Trex Recycling Film Challenge. Uh, the objective was to educate the public on the importance of plastic film recycling through the school and community recycling programs. Um, this gives customers another way to recycle their plastic bags. Uh, clean, dry, single-use plastic bags are recycled with NextTrex. The goal is to collect 500 pounds of the plastic bag, which is approximately 40,500 bags.
Wow.
If we can collect that many in a six-month period, um, then Trex will provide us a Trex Yacht Club 48-inch bench for free. Um, I think everyone in the community uses, most everyone uses plastic, um, grocery bags, and I know they build up very quickly. They do at my house. So, uh, one of the opportunities that you have now, if you don't dispose of them in the trash, which we don't want you to dispose them in, in your normal garbage, is to take them to a local, uh, either Harris Teeter or Food Line local, uh, grocery store. We're asking that you now bring those to different locations around town that the Town of Fort Mill will have, uh, collection spots. Maybe this will, it should be a little closer to your home rather than driving maybe across town to a, uh, grocery store. So, um, before I get to that, uh, the way the program works is in the blow of the plastic film, which is the next, there we go. Um, you collect it, all of the bags in a, uh, collection, uh, bin, which the town will be purchasing and placing at different locations. Um, one of those is a gro- would be the grocery store, the way it was in, uh, the way you'd use it now before this program. Um, the grocery distribution will actually bundle the bags and, um, and bail them and send them back to Trex. And so that's a partnership between the town, between the grocery stores. We'll collect them, we'll weigh them, and then we'll deliver them to our partner, um, grocery store is the Food Line here in Fort Mill on Tom Hall Street. Uh, they have, um, they've offered to accept those for us. They'll bail them, send them back to Trex, and all we're doing as a town is collecting the bags and weighing them and then, uh, transporting them to the Food Line on Tom Hall Street. So it's a, it's a very good opportunity. It's a win-win situation for both, um, the Town of Fort Mill and, uh, Food Line and the Trex Corporation. Um, so how does the program work? So, um, town personnel will initially kick this off. We'll handle this in-house. Uh, we hope that it grows to a point where we're going to reach out to the community for volunteers to help us with this, but it, in the, in interim, uh, town staff will be handling this. We'll pick up the bags from collection bins on a weekly basis, um, and, and more often if needed, uh, but we will check forward and remove any items that's not approved. Uh, we will weigh the bags, again, uh, drop off small batches at partner locations, Food Line, and we even have Harris Teeter listed on here. Uh, we'll report the weights, um, to the program administrator, and then, uh, once we get, reach the 500-pound goal, uh, they will send, Trex will send us a Yacht Club 48-inch bench at a $299 value. So we can, we can collect and, uh, be awarded up to one bench per six, every six months. Um, potential bag collection sites, uh, we anticipate having one in front of Town Hall, uh, one in front of the police station, um, one at the Fort Mill Community Center, um, the one at YMCA at the complex. We'll have them distributed in our town parks. Uh, we'll have to build a shelter for them because the bags must remain dry. Um, and then if, once the program grows, uh, we'll invite neighborhood clubhouses, uh, and approved HOAs, if they want to join in and, and partner with the town, we'll provide them to those locations. Um, again, the, we're, we're excited about this. Um, the town staff, again, will collect these bags, um, and get these to Trex. Um, Trex accepts a number of different, uh, styles of plastic bag and film items, but for contamination with unacceptable items being a risk, the town is beginning the program to limit it to, uh, collecting of, a collection of plastic shopping bags only. Uh, we feel like that's the most, uh, efficient way for us to get this program up and off the ground because, uh, you know, right now in our current recycling program, we do have issues from time to time with contamination in our recycling because we, we offer a, a variety of different items. You can recycle single string. Uh, to make this program very simple, we're starting just with grocery bags. There's plenty of those. We feel like we can collect 500 pounds of those to, uh, to acquire, uh, at least, you know, to begin to acquire at least one bench. We hope to acquire multiple benches. So the benches will be placed, uh, throughout Fort Mill in, uh, different, uh, Town Hall parks. So we're very excited about that opportunity. Um, and so we will have, uh, again, a select location and colors of the benches. We'll be able to determine at the town what color benches we want. Uh, we can be, uh, creative and have different, different color styles and different, in each of the parks, or we could go with one style and be beautiful across town. We can decide that as we start, um, being awarded the benches. Uh, and of course, the benches will be secured in place so that they remain in the park that we've placed them in. So again, we're very excited about this program, and we ask that all of our citizens, uh, participate with us in this program, uh, and bring all of their bags to our, uh, collection sites that will be posted on our Town website and social media accounts, uh, in the next, uh, probably this, Monday this week. Um, one of the questions may be, uh, the program cost and funding. Um, again, sturdy weather for the bins for outdoor collection sites will be purchased by the town. Uh, clear collection bags for hanging will be purchased as well. Um, we'll be printing for educational flyers, uh, which will be included in billing statements, uh, posters and laminated for labeling bins, and, uh, gloves for volunteers collecting bags if we, once it grows to that point. Um, one funding mechanism, uh, we are submitting a, um, submitting for a solid waste grant through the Cyclone Department of Health and Environmental Control for year 2022. Um, of course, the, uh, application deadline was April 2nd. We've already submitted for that grant and have not heard back at this town. Um, and then the other, uh, additional funds will be provided from, or by the town. So that is our overall Bags to Benches Program. Again, it's a, it's a very good opportunity for everyone to take their, um, grocery bags that they collect and, and store up and bring them to our sites and let us collect them and, uh, and be rewarded with free benches. Um, it'll help, it'll help Town of Fort Mill. It'll be, uh, another added benefit to all of our town parks, and, uh, we're looking forward to this program brewing leaps of bounds.
Wonderful, wonderful. Uh, three terrific program approaches to Earth Day and bringing improvements to our community. Anybody have questions in regards, uh, to the Bags to Benches Program?
The, uh, bags that Harris Teeter and Food Line are collecting, are they letting us have those too, or?
The benches?
No, they already collect bags.
They already collect bags.
They already collect the bags, and we don't get credit for them, the ones they already collect. So we only get credit for the ones that we collect and weigh and then take to the grocery store. So it's, if you don't, you know, for citizens that do not want to bring them to us, please continue taking them to the grocery stores because,
Yeah.
you know, the bags come in handy when you're, when you're carrying them out of a grocery store, but we want to make sure we're getting those recycled properly and not into our, uh, sanitation stream.
Then my wife takes ours down the, uh, wall.
That's a great idea.
I probably have enough bags that I'm packing up, but at least a half a bench.
Between the two of us, we could probably make two benches.
Yeah.
I got about 500 pounds in my garage right now.
Well, it's a good way to make use of them. I'm it.
So just keep an eye out on our website and our social media platforms. We'll be providing more information as we move through that this week.
Yeah, better than hanging them in trees.
Great, thank you so much.
I just hate throwing them away.
Yeah. I try not to use them, but some days I forget. All right. With that, uh, great presentations, we'll move into old business items. Old business item number one is a second reading, an ordinance raising the minimum charge for town requested record services in accordance with Section 8-96 of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill. Our, um, person to lead this is Davy Brum. Do I have a motion?
Making a motion except old business item number one.
Have a, I have a motion and a second. Davy, has anything changed since our previous vote on this item?
No, ma'am, nothing has changed.
Right. Any questions for Davy? All those in favor of this motion to approve second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much. New business items. New business item number one, first reading and public hearing, an ordinance to amend the budget for the Town of Fort Mill, South Carolina for the fiscal year beginning October the 1st, 2020, and ending September 30th, 2021. We will enter into the public hearing at this point in time. Okay? We have no one signed up and no one here, uh, for this particular public meeting, so we will close the public meeting. With that, do I have a motion on the first reading?
I make a motion except new business item number one.
Okay, have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Uh, Davy, do you have anything you need to tell us in regards to this item?
Uh, yes, Mayor. Uh, so at the time of the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget was approved back in, uh, September of 2020. Uh, COVID was still creating a lot of uncertainty as to how the town's revenues and expenditures might unfold over the upcoming fiscal year. Uh, due to this, staff and council agreed to complete a mid-year review of the town's finances to more accurately determine the impact of COVID on the, uh, on the budget and allow for a mid-year budget amendment to address any necessary changes. Uh, over the last month, staff has completed a, uh, line-by-line review of the town's budget, comparing year-over-year figures with, uh, last fiscal year as of February 2020, therefore giving a good non-COVID comparison. Um, uh, the results of the mid-year review have been favorable, and therefore, staff is presenting this budget amendment to make adjustments to the revenues and expenditures for the remainder of the 2020, 2021 fiscal year, which will end in September 30th, 2021. Um, the slide that we have, uh, excuse me, uh, is the, uh, from, from staff's, uh, study into the revenues so far for the first five months through the end of February, uh, it's determined that, uh, for our general fund, it has, uh, we exceeded our expectation by 8.6%. Um, the original budget, um, projections were to receive 21,943,377 in the general fund. Our amended, uh, projections are now, um, for 23,837,555, which is, um, just shy of $1.9 million to the good. So, um, the grocery revenue fund, uh, our projections were a little closer, um, but we still saw a, um, half of a percent increase in, in revenues, and our storm, stormwater fund, 7.2% increase. So based on those increases over our projections back from, uh, September of 2020, uh, staff is, um, bringing forward the opportunity for a, an amended budget that would have some, uh, um, additions to that, and I'd like to speak on a couple of those additions. Um, some of those would be, would include, uh, general fund positions that were not funded in the current budget. Um, they include a risk manager, a project manager, an information technology administrator, and a part-time farmer's market attendant. Uh, also included, uh, in this amendment would be a 3% cost of living raise for all town employees, um, which would be retroactive at the beginning of the fiscal year, October 2020. Um, of course, that includes, uh, both the general fund, grocery revenue, and stormwater. Uh, we were also, because of the, um, um, positive projections, uh, before we had, uh, looked at re, um, spending out of our capital expenses for $821,672 worth of equipment that was needed, um, we can now reclassify that and pay that, um, with, um, new revenue instead of going through our reserves for that. So those are the highlights of what is being added or requested to be added back to the current budget. Um, and I'll be glad to take any questions if you may have one.
Are there?
Go ahead, Jeff.
There's no mileage increase for this, right?
That is correct. There's no mileage increase, um, at all. This is just, um, standard revenues, um, that, that we expect to receive by, uh, September 30th, 2021.
Further questions for Davy? I think it's important at this point in time to look back over, uh, a year of not understanding how things were going to turn out, how long it was going to last, what the costs were going to be, what the public was going to be able to withstand and maintain businesses and taxes, and, and, and I'm very proud of the action that this council and this staff has taken to ensure that we could continue to gain ensure that we could continue to gainfully employ our staff and not lose folks, which I'm, I'm proud of that. And we've maintained, if not exceeded, our services. So I'm extremely proud of the work of the town. I look forward to better days when we can get back to aggressively pursuing the things that, you know, may or may not result in a tax increase so that we can continue the work that we plan for the town. But this particular year, I hope we never have to repeat it again.
I agree.
Picking back on your comments, Mayor, that inclusion of the three percent cost of living raise back to our employees, retroactive just shows, commend staff on the work you guys have done, but the conservative approach together now, rewarding those people that make, make it happen every day. So kudos to you guys, so thank you.
I know and we're very thankful for that.
And we're glad to be with the employees and be able to receive that retroactive.
I'm very happy about that. Thank you, Chris. Any further comment? The motion on the floor is to approve the first reading and we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Thank you so much. New business item number two, first reading and public hearing, an ordinance annexing the property currently or formerly known as York County Tax Map Number seven four two zero 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 one, containing approximately one hundred ninety-four point five eight plus or minus acres located at twenty-six oh one, South Dobie's Bridge Road. This is in Ward Four, it's Mr. Moody's Ward. Penelope is our expert on this and we will open the public hearing at this point in time.
Mayor, we've not had anyone sign up to speak.
All right, we do not have anyone here signed up to speak for this public hearing, so we will close the public hearing at this point in time. Now, on the first reading, do I have a motion?
I'm making a motion to accept new business item number two.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the first reading of the ordinance in new business item number two. Or Penelope, would you like to walk us through the presentation perhaps?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is anexation request from D.R. Horton to annex one hundred and ninety-four point five acres. With an annexation, it is contiguous to the town of Fort Mill limits, so it was eligible for this annexation request. With every annexation that we do, a rezoning is tied with it, so the annexation has requested, or D.R. Horton has requested a zoning designation of R-ten. At this time, based on the annexation and also Planning Commission recommendation, it was made to recommend approval of the annexation with the R-ten zoning. The applicant did complete a traffic impact analysis and once that TIA was completed, a traffic mitigation agreement has been entered with the client, the town, and also York County. I'm here to answer any questions. The applicant is here to, I believe they have, if you allow them, an opportunity to, to give up their presentation. I did have one resident this, this weekend from the Massey community. Her name was Anne Richmond. She had concerns, just questions about air quality, traffic, tax, tax implications. So some of those questions I was able to answer. She was not able to come to the public hearing and, you know, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. And Amy Massey, our consultant, is here as well, that, you know, was responsible in reviewing the, the TIA and helping the town with the traffic mitigation agreement.
I think at this point in time, it would be appropriate to allow the D.R. Horton folks to, to make their presentation.
Mayor Savage, this is Dan Baloo with Morton and Geddes in Rock Hill. My address is three thirty-one East Main Street. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, D.R. Horton, and have got a few comments and then I want to introduce some folks who can fill in some, some more of the details of this project. We come before you tonight with a request for an annexation and a zoning. This is on behalf of D.R. Horton, which many of you may know as a, a builder of high-quality neighborhoods throughout the country. This is their first project within the town of Fort Mill, however. They, they have experience in other parts of York County, but this would be their first project in, in the town and they're very excited about the opportunity of becoming a part of this, this unique community. This is the Snodgrass property on Dobie's Bridge Road and there's some, some maps in your packet that show exactly where this, this property is located, about one hundred and ninety-four acres. And we're, again, we're asking for an R-ten zoning classification if the annexation request is approved. Of course, Dobie's Bridge corridor has experienced some tremendous growth over the past years. We believe this project presents some, something of a departure from previous developments and we really hope that it gets your, your approval tonight. There are three areas we want to focus on. The first is this has a tremendous amount of open space. This project, more than half of the one hundred and ninety-four acres, this parcel, are, will be preserved as open space with trails and natural space throughout. The density of this project is less than most of the other projects that will come before you of this nature. This is less than half the density allowed under the R-ten classification and you will get some more detail on that, but, but we see the value of this project as, as being, you know, larger lots, lower density, better quality of life, consistent with some of the goals that the town has embraced over the years. The, the third issue that we want to talk about is the traffic improvements and we think those are substantial. There, the mitigation plan that D.R. Horton has worked with, with collaborating with staff on this provides a substantial off-site benefit to, to Dobie's Bridge Road in a number of areas that we'll, that we'll be able to detail. And these, these will be for the benefit not just of this subdivision, but of the entire community. With me tonight are Chris Meechey of D.R. Horton, who'll speak a little bit about the background of D.R. Horton and their vision and priorities for this project, and John Holcomb of Kinley Horn to discuss the site plan and deep design details in a little more detail. And we, we really appreciate the opportunity to appear before you tonight. So with that, I will pass the baton on to Chris and he can tell you a little bit more about D.R. Horton.
Great, thank you, Dan. I appreciate it. Mayor Savage, Fort Mill Town Council members, thank you tonight for giving us the opportunity to present this petition to you. As you can see from this slide, our development team, D.R. Horton being the developer, Kinley Horn, our consultant, is heading up our design and engineering for the project. We've been working on this for a little over a year and a half now and they've been with us the entire way. You obviously already just heard from Dan Baloo with Morton and Geddes. We brought Dan on board for his expertise and knowledge and hope that, guiding us through this process with you. And if you could move to the next slide. D.R. Horton, if you don't know who we are as a home builder, we are the nation's largest home builder by volume. We, we break that up into four different brands that fly under the D.R. Horton moniker. The first one is just our traditional D.R. Horton brand, which this product, sorry, this project would be our D.R. Horton brand. That's usually your second and third time home buyer. Our Express brand is our entry level brand that, that is a little obviously more affordable product out there. That's not for this project, but that's, we have several communities throughout the Charlotte area that feature the Express product. Our Emerald brand is our luxury brand. It's for smaller projects. I would say that anywhere from maybe thirty, forty lots and under, a little bit higher of a price point than we traditionally do with the majority of our product nationwide. And then our Freedom Homes brand, which is our, typically billed as our age targeted. And as you can see, some of the photos in the current slide show what's very typical of our D.R. Horton brand and would be typical of the Dobie's Bridge Road project, what we would intend to build. If you could move on to the next slide. Who are, who is D.R. Horton? Donald Horton is chairman of the board. He is still with the company, very much an active part of it. We have a CEO, David All, that runs the day-to-day operations, but Mr. Horton is still very active in all of the markets that D.R. Horton operates in. If, and we've been obviously a home builder for over forty years. I believe we celebrated our anniversary back in twenty eighteen. Next slide, please. Industry standard since nineteen seventy-eight, just really, this is just a kind of a quick historical background on who we are and what we've done and really kind of those three cornerstones of what we'd like to build to, to everyone that, that comes into one of our homes, one of our models or communities. Value, trust, and tradition, those are just kind of the three cornerstones of what we'd like to, to show to others. Next slide, please. And we're the business with best and the biggest, that's, we, we're very proud of that moniker. We, we are number one nationwide. Last year, we became the largest builder in Charlotte by volume. If you could move to the next slide. That gives a little bit more of a picture. Nationwide, we build about, we sold approximately sixty-five thousand homes. In Charlotte, we do, we did about sixteen hundred homes in total sales volume. If you can move to the next slide. And these are the markets that we currently operate and we're in twenty-nine states, ninety markets across the U.S. You can see we have a, a pretty big prominence in the southeast. We are Arlington, Texas-based. We've been in Charlotte, I'm sorry, pardon me, the Charlotte market, Greater Charlotte Market, an eleven county region. I believe we've been here for just over twenty-five years, is my understanding. Can you forward to the next slide, please? And this is just, just gives you a pretty, pretty brief and quick where we are in the market. As you can see, we do not currently have a Fort Mill community. We do have a community just down the road from you all in Lancaster County called Avondale off of Harrisburg Road. It is the closest in proximity to this site and has very similar products. So what, what we're building there today, you could expect to see on this project on Dobie's Bridge. Next slide, please. Location, location, yes, this is just something, I think, more than anything, we, we'd want to be in those locations that our buyers really want us to be in. As I mentioned, as Dan had mentioned earlier, we are not currently in Fort Mill. It is somewhere we would very much like to be. We understand the desire to be here. Everything that we heard earlier shows what an incredible town and location it is to be in, in Fort Mill and we would love to be a positive part of the community and be a part of that. Next slide, please. We have inventory and like a lot of other home buyers, or home builders, excuse me, that are out there, we do have a number of inventory homes that are still available. We're, we're pretty proud of that fact, but like many, we are running out of them rapidly and we're always looking for new locations. That's, that's a primary part of my role with the company and, and obviously this one, this opportunity is a little bit different from others that we look at because as Dan has mentioned earlier, it's a much lower density development. It's definitely a higher price point than we're typically used to, but we are very excited about that opportunity. We think it's a fantastic location. Next slide, please. And that's just really just a quick recap. With that, I'm going to hand it over to John Holcomb, who's going to go into some more detail, site-specific detail about our project and I'll be here throughout the call and after to answer any questions that you may have about the company. And thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Savage, council members. I'm John Holcomb with Kinley Horn and Associates. I live right here in Fort Mill at twenty fifty-six Angel Oak Drive. Was excited to hear about the strawberry festival plans as my elementary school-age son is, was working on his artwork contest entry earlier this morning. So that was exciting to hear about all that news and a lot of good stuff happening. If you could go to the next, get next side there. So just wanted to start with the, the benefits of lower density. Dan, Dan mentioned our project is almost half of what would be allowed in an R-ten zoning. Specific benefits of that are the open space preservation, as mentioned, a traffic reduction out of the development and, and decreasing as much as we can the amount of impact to the, the system along with the improvements that are provided there. The environmental preservation that goes back to that open space and, and what we're trying to keep in place from a natural aspect and some of the, the stream tributaries that are there and, and the, the trees and everything that we can try to keep as this development occurs, we will certainly do our, our best to, to keep things looking as they do, especially from the Dobie's Bridge view shed. Lowering construction and maintenance costs, that also is a benefit from this development, being the lower density and, and having, you know, not having as many streets throughout, not having as much utilities and infrastructure in place that, you know, after it is built and accepted by the town becomes a town cost and, and maintenance cost. So doing our best to, you know, lower the development and, and keep those costs relative to the development. And then lastly, along those same lines is just the energy conservation and, and the impact of this development to the overall system. Next slide, please. Again, there was a map that Penelope provided. Here's another version of that, just showing in relation to seventy-seven in downtown Fort Mill Parkway, the, the schools and where that site is located. It is, this spans from Dobie's Bridge down to the Catapa River and, and in a, in a great spot in town. If you could go to the next slide. So here, again, talking about density and, and use, Fort Mill's future land use map and then twenty forty comp plan shows this area of town being a mix of low to moderate density and, and low-density residential development. Each of those has a density range much higher than we are proposing. In the area, in fact, there's eight existing subdivisions in the area that we looked at and those subdivisions have an average density of one point nine five DUA and we're at one point three seven DUA. Of those eight, there were two, two of those subdivisions had a lower DUA, one of them being right next to us, the, the forest at one point three two, which I would say is, is relatively even and they have a higher, or I'd say a, a lower zoning class at the R-15 that requires a little less density there. Next, next side, please. So we had a lot of collaboration and coordination with town staff. Chris mentioned we've been working on this project for a little over a year and a half. We started with a multitude of, of layout options. This one before you is, is one of the ones that we presented to, to staff and worked through with Penelope and Chris and Alex and, and others. It had a mix of, of town homes, a smaller unit product in the middle and then a, a larger product on the outside. When I say smaller or larger, I'm talking about the width of the, of the lots. So this plan had almost, well, not almost double, it had three hundred and eighty-five dwelling units on it. The density was almost two, just under two, and the open space that was provided was about sixty-six acres. You know, we, we came in with that, this plan thinking that because of the acreage and because of the density, it was, was a possibility to work there. Quickly found out staff, staff had some good suggestions on, you know, what, what the town is looking for as far as residential growth and, and from there translated into what the plan is today. If you could go to the next slide, please. So some of the initial feedback we got from staff was that plan that you saw before worked because of R-five zoning, that isn't available in the town anymore. So we came in, we adjusted the plan and, and came in with a, a development and a layout that works under the R-ten zoning and does not require any conditions or anything outside of what would be allowed in the R-ten district. We removed all the town homes, increased open space, provided the nature trails, provided a, a town collector that you may have noticed on that twenty forty comp plan as a, as another connector. comp plan as a, as another connection point that would, you know, in the future alleviate traffic and and adjust traffic flows from both Dobie's Bridge and this new collector when it would be extended throughout. There was a sliver of the property that we used as an access point that was in between the existing residents that carves out of this project, pair of this property and the the forest subdivision. We had a, one of our main access points through there, moved it and then we provided an additional twenty five foot buffer along that five hundred foot wide Duke Power easement. And then we also removed residential units, home lots that were, had backyards towards Dobie's Bridge and 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 gave a little more separation from where the development actually starts to to Dobie's Bridge to provide a little more buffer. All all great feedback from town staff and and what we use to then ju- adjust to a plan that I think both town and and Dr. Horton are happy with. If you could go to the next slide, that'll show this new plan. So the plan reduced from that three hundred and eighty five units that I had mentioned before down to two hundred and sixty seven. All of these lots are over ten thousand square feet in size. And it provides now over a hundred acres of open space on a hundred and ninety four acres of land. So I'm trying to, again, preserve that open space, that that green space across the the property. If you could go to the next slide. This is just a a quick breakdown of some of those and comparisons between the initial plan and and the updated plans. Won't read through them all, just highlight a few of them. Again, the the reduction in almost a hundred and twenty dwelling units, removing the town homes, reducing the density, increasing lot size, increasing open space. I think it it all speaks for itself. If you could go to the next slide, please. So here's some of those features of that plan that, again, want to want to point out that we've got over fifty percent of open space. We're working through whether that is the hundred and almost hundred and three acres, that's open space, natural area, recreation area. We're currently in conversations with Duke Power about the the possibility to use some of their five hundred foot easement as rec field. And and then it's an ongoing conversation with Dr. Horton and Duke Power on on what we can and can't provide there and and try to meet that that additional rec usage that can be offered to the town. They, Dr. Horton, has a commitment for quality materials, so they have, they have committed not to use vinyl siding out here and will be using other materials as such. And then we did provide both the required setbacks around the perimeter and as a request from the town, an additional twenty five foot setback from that existing power easement. So we're really meeting or exceeding all the setbacks and buffers onsite. I also mentioned, and you can kind of see it in that top picture, that extra area up along Dobie's Bridge that that really provides some some buffer and not having homes right up against the limits of the property as some of the adjacent subdivisions are laid out. If you could go to the next slide, please. Just a couple of photos of proposed amenities in the area. There will be a a focal point with a pool and a clubhouse. We've got the playground, the nature trails throughout, keeping them as as fairly natural as as possible, just to have that that natural feel onsite. If you could go to the next slide, please. This gets into the transportation improvements that is what we think is both a benefit to to the town and and mitigates for those two hundred and sixty seven units being added to the to the area by this development. The first of which is right in front of the site, really from existing intersection to existing intersection across the frontage, almost a half a mile of road widening that would increase. And I'll show you a a slide here shortly of that detail, but it increases the width from a two lane section that's there today to a full three lane section that has that that shared turn lane in the middle. The additional bike lanes on both sides of the road, as it's, as you may have seen, you know, driving around town, you've got that extra five feet of of pavement that's striped for bikes and provides more safety and some routes for folks on bikes along Dobie's Bridge. And then additionally, there's pedestrian improvements as way of of sidewalks also on both sides. So where, yeah, on the opposite side of the street, on the massive side of the street where there are gaps in the sidewalk, those gaps will be filled in. And then additionally, we would extend sidewalk from the, from the forest where it ends for the forest subdivision to the limits on the, I'll call it east side or south side of this property. In addition to that widening adjacent to this project, there's also a northbound right turn lane at Dudley Drive. Dudley Drive is the street that Dobie's Bridge Elementary would come off of Dobie's Bridge for. So we're adding another turn lane there. There's one southbound already. Now there would be one northbound. And in addition to that, there'd be the bike and pedestrian improvements there by way of of a sidewalk that you can actually then cross Dudley Drive and have the the ramps and such to do. Right now, there is no pedestrian crossing in that area. The sidewalks wrap each side of the street and don't actually intend to to allow folks unless they cut through the grass or something to come across there. And then the last improvement is up at the Fort Mill Parkway and that would be a dedicated right turn lane. Yes, there is one there today. There's a right turn and a left turn. But there is future development across the street so that by way of this additional lane, this additional turn lane would create a scenario that in the future, when development happens across the street, there could now be a a left turn lane, a through lane and a right turn lane or how however that that improved intersection works out with town's traffic engineer and and the other developments happening up and down the this area altogether. I mean, those improvements are are north of two million dollars worth of improvement. We really see that as as a benefit, you know, to the town, to the community by way of their earmark. You know, Dr. Horton is committed through the mitigation agreement to put these improvements in as part of their project. So with with that, you are getting these improvements versus having to wait on timing of SCVOT or or the county coming through and and trying to to fund a project and then get it constructed. So it's really, you know, tho- those dollars, those improvements are happening, you know, quote unquote now versus what it could be if it was directed by the state and such. Next, please. So here's some of those details of those improvements. As you can see in the section, this is the widening. As I mentioned, from intersection to intersection in a three lane section. That typical section on the top of the page is the drawing. You see the eleven foot lanes and then the five feet of pavement after that would be those bike lanes that we talked about. And then outside of each ditch section that you see is then where a a five foot sidewalk is shown. Next slide, please. This is the the turn lane that Dudley Drive. Just reiterate what I talked you through prior that we're talking about a northbound or a westbound turn lane towards Dobie's Bridge Elementary. And next slide. And this last is the turn lane at Fort Mill Parkway as as suggested. So that affers another a lane at that intersection for improvements and and helps mitigate the addition of our project. I think that is it for me. If you could go to the next slide. Pass it back to Dan for closing remarks.
Thank you, John. And Mayor Savage and and members of council, we we recognize that y'all are are our growth management is really one of the 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 primary functions of your of of your council as you consider these kinds of things, these kinds of of requests and applications. What I want to suggest to you is something that I've heard in this community time and time again is growth paying for growth. And I want to suggest to you that this this particular application is an example of that. They have reduced their density. They have increased their their green space. They are investing substantial dollars offsite to mitigate for the impacts. And and whether that was done in prior subdivisions or not, this is an example of a developer who's willing to come into this community and do these kinds of things as well as accepting the impact fees at the town and the district level that will help mitigate the impacts of of the residents of as well. So we feel like this is a strong project, something that would be a real, a real benefit and 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 an asset to the town. We're here to answer any questions you may have about the project in particular or any of the 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 aspects that we've discussed tonight. There's been a lot of material thrown at you. We are, again, really appreciate your attention and your your consideration of this and 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 I hope we can get your approval.
Thank you, Dan. I'd like to start with the question. Were you made aware when you began the preparation with your TIA that Dobie's Bridge Road was already rated an F in the scale of capacity? Anyone?
John, do you want to address that?
Sure. Yeah, I I believe that was discovered through the TIA. And and we we are with the improvements that you see there mitigating for our development as provided by the Town of Fort Mill's transportation engineer and reviewed by the town.
We don't have a transportation engineer. I don't, I heard that earlier. The Town of Fort Mill does not employ a transportation engineer. So I'm not sure, who who were you speaking with?
Your, the town has a third party engineer that prepares TIAs for the benefit of the town, for on behalf of the town. So that, that TIA, yep, so that TIA was provided for this development and reviewed by the town, by the county and by the state to show mitigation of this development to the existing street network in the area.
I I could, we could discuss this at length, but I will tell you, when I spoke with Dan earlier, as he called us and we talked about this project, I explained that it would be an uphill battle for acceptance. I can't, I can't speak for the rest of council, but I can speak for myself. And for the last five years, I have not voted for a single development in which the road system that it would use was close to a hundred percent capacity. Sitting on our fats for five years, I happen to know that an S is failing, that is failing. And traveling that road on a day to day basis, it is not in a situation where I think even I estimated two cars, two hundred and sixty seven homes, that's five hundred and thirty four more cars on Dobie's Road and ultimately on the bypass in which we are still waiting to get one of the intersections on the bypass fixed so that we don't have a major backup every morning and every afternoon. So I I love the plans, the you have crossed every T and dotted every I. But I don't, I don't believe that I can support additional cars and homes providing cars on that bypass to this effect. I am one vote here tonight, but I wanted to be straight up with you. I did not want to just vote one way or the other without providing comment as to why. So council members, it's your turn.
Ms. Massey, are you available, please?
Yes, absolutely.
This is Chris Moody. How are you? It's been a while.
Hi, Chris. Doing good. If you are.
Yeah, doing good. Just been reviewing the notes in from planning commission between you and Commissioner Wolf. And, you know, I'm looking at the at the last paragraph says, Ms. Massey, you continue to, you know, the developers should all be responsible for the change in the site due to their respect, to their project. As an example, she, she used the point Mr. Wolf had noted on the future level of services collected within Tia, Fort Mill Parkway and North Dobie's Bridge Road. The location would indeed be a service level of F and A and there, however, there would only be a six second increase in wait time with the with the build scenario in the PM, we're seeing a level service of D, which consider that North Dobie's is in our period old roadway. This level of service will be meeting the required standard, therefore no improvements were recommended at this intersection. Going on down, last paragraph, page six. Commissioner Wolf, thank you for your input and clarifying, he was not suggesting developers fix all traffic issues in Fort Mill, rather. He noted that while the road improvements that were recommended by the TIA do help, there's simply the bigger problem of traffic in this area, which affects those residents already there. Mr. Wolf stated at some point, the overall issue of traffic is going to be dealt with because we cannot just continue to add traffic to roads that are already having problems. He would also say that if we know that we're going to be in a service level of S and we know there are other developments continuing, we will never be able to get ahead of this traffic issue. So in your firm, how's this handled across your county and Charlotte region when you had Ds and Fs?
Well, I would.
Do you walk through that?
Yeah, sure, absolutely. I would first say that, as it was previously mentioned, you, Kimley Horn performed the transportation impact analysis or TIA in coordination with town staff, York County staff, as well as South Carolina DOT staff throughout the process and following, you know, all the standards and methodologies on a national scale, state scale and town scale. And when I say town, I'm talking about specifically the town's TIA ordinance. And so generally, most municipalities in this year, in this overall area would have some sort of guidelines, like, for example, York County has what's called TIA Guidelines methodology manual. I think that's what it's called. Anyway, a lot of acronyms in this business, right? But everybody generally has that same guidance that says that a a development is responsible for its impact. Hence, the transportation impact analysis being the title of the study, whether it's a TIS or TIA, it's the site impact that is most importantly taken into consideration when you're looking at the future. And this is projections, okay, the best information that we have. But the future twenty twenty six scenario that we looked at has incorporated in it the existing traffic volumes. In addition to that, it would be, and those are based on manual counts. And then in addition, a four point six percent annual compounded growth rate for this project based on historical data. And then on top of that, we also added in the traffic, the projected traffic from prior traffic studies for what we would call approved offsite developments. So those are factored in into the future scenario. And then that is our baseline or background case that we compare then with the addition of site traffic that's being proposed. And we we look at the delta there and that's how we determine the mitigation that would be the responsibility of each development, whether it's residential development or, you know, commercial or mixed use or what have you. know, commercial or mixed use or what have you. It's, it's generally the same, you know, the same idea. And I would say that that, that approach is standard for all the municipalities in this area, including the city of Charlotte. And the city of Charlotte, we're actually one of two reviewers of, of TIA's. Actually, they call it a TIS Traffic Impact Study in Charlotte, but here, we're serving the town, you know, as your consultant to, to study the, it does have existing, existing scenarios as well. So we look at that as well, but the most important thing in determining the mitigation would be what is caused by the proposed site. And in this case, it's 267 dwelling units, as was mentioned earlier. The, and just to note, the peak hour trip generation that would come based upon Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual would be 194 morning peak hour trips. That's during the highest one hour in the morning. And then in the afternoon peak would be 261, I'm sorry.
Is that from like 7:00 AM to 8:00? Or what, what time are we talking there? School?
Uh, well, it varies depending on the intersection in terms of the manual counts, but in this case, it would have been between 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning, or 4:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon.
Sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, that's okay. And, and, but those trip generation numbers that I just gave you, the 194 in the morning peak and the 261 in the PM peak, those would be during the highest peak hour for single-family homes, you know, a development of this nature. And it's dependent upon the, the intensity, the, you know, the 267 dwelling units as well. And that's based on fitted equation. So, so it was mentioned earlier about maybe two cars per residence, and that certainly may be true. But I guess the point of the fitted equations, and that's based on years of, of studies that have been compiled and calculated for developments of all different kinds of sizes, in this case, single-family. But those trips are typically not all made during one peak hour. You know, usually, like for example, I know I leave the house well before my husband leaves. And, you know, when I had children, you know, living in our TKK house, you know, they were leaving at different times as well. So that's a trip generation, just to sort of backtrack on that a little bit. And to answer the question, this is a pretty standard approach and methodology across the region.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor Savage, this is, this is Dan again, and, and you're, you're absolutely right. You were, you were kind enough to take my call a couple of weeks back, and, and I do appreciate your candor and your honesty as how you approach these things. And I, you know, it, it's no surprise to me, it's no surprise to, to DR Horton that this is a concern. I, I guess our, our, our position on this would be that, that we as a, as a developer, as, as a potential member of the, of the community are trying to step up to do something about the, the congestion on, on, and the performance levels on Dobie's Bridge by doing this substantial investment offsite. You know, should, should some other developments maybe have invested in that along the way? I mean, that's water under the, under the bridge at this point. But we, we do, we do believe that, that we are doing what we, what, what we can and not worsening the problem. And if, if, if our application is rejected, Dobie's Bridge will remain the same as it is until DOT or some other source of funding that comes along. We, we do think that this project provides at least some, and we think more than some, a, a substantial benefit in terms of, of these turn lanes and the, the expand, expansion of the roadway to, to really not only meet our, our, our impacts, but, but, but exceed those impacts and how we're, we're trying to, to make things better. But, but it is, it is a complicated problem, and, you know, we perhaps are coming to the, to the party late, but, but we want to make sure that the town understands that we are committed to doing our part and more along the way.
Dan, I appreciate the discussions we have. They are absolutely fun for me in that we are two people that can say exactly what we mean. And you are right, we should have said no a lot of times before now. And I think it has taken quite a bit of time for us to come to that realization and get the courage to do so. So I do believe that as we fine-tune our process for development agreements that meet up with the standards that our community wants us to, then we have to make even additional changes. As I'm sitting here watching a beautiful presentation of a, a pretty nice developer, a great, great builder, I, I know the product, I know they're wonderful, all of you are very good people. But I do think that we continue to drop the ball in not recognizing that what you're saying is that you would do all the things necessary to mitigate your impact. But the fact of the matter is, there's still going to be additional traffic. It's still yet again another step on that roadway that currently is at an F. So I'm not going to go further because there's still other council members that can, you know, provide you with their viewpoint. But you're exactly right, we should have said no a lot before today.
I'll go ahead and start with some of my questions. This is Lisa Cook. I do live in the Massey subdivision, right across the street. As you look at your three-lane cross-section there, the first time I had was basically on the other side of your right-hand entrance. This affects me very significantly, not only as a council member, but also because it is my teenage driver that is pulling out on Dryden Street. It's myself that is doing this. Have, we have tried to almost avoid, and I'm kind of surprised that there's no mitigation, it seems like, for the Dryden Street entrance area into Massey or on down the Phils, that it looks like the mitigation's being done on the opposite side. Is there a reason the right-hand side of Dobie's, as we're looking at the map, didn't have any improvements? I'm very surprised, especially with the extremely sharp curb and the blind sight that's there. As you're pulling out of Dryden, you, it's really scary. I will admit, it's scary pulling out of there, especially if you're turning the left, trying to go towards Indianland. So is there a reason, and maybe it's Kinley and Horn that can help us with why there wasn't any mitigation done on the south side of Dobie's Bridge?
So.
Amy, yeah?
Yeah, I can, I, I think, and I don't know if we could pull up the mitigation diagram or the roadway concepts that were being shown earlier, but I hope I'm going to answer this right, or with the intent. First of all, Dryden Street is an entrance, you know, obviously, as you know, is an entrance to a, an existing development that was approved previously, right? That maybe went through a similar process as this. And so that intersection of Dryden Street was not included as a study area intersection. Typically, or as a rule of thumb, and this is in the town's ordinance, says that signalized intersections within a one-mile radius would be incorporated into the study area of, and again, we're focusing on peak hours at intersections, right? So, but those intersections would be selected based upon, of course, coordination, scoping meeting, all those things that we had at the beginning of, of the process for the TIA. But Dryden Street is an unsignalized intersection, stop-controlled intersection, if you will. And so the TIA ordinance says to include intersection, signalized intersections within one mile of the site. Typically, we measure that from the site access, so that means signalized intersections within that radius. And then the town certainly has, town staff has the ability to add intersections of concern, hence the, the addition of Dudley Drive. Typically, private development, I'm going out on a limb here, but typically, prior developments that have been approved and are being built or that are already built, those driveways or streets would not, especially if they're unsignalized, would not usually, in my experience of 26 years or whatever, that, you know, that those wouldn't normally be included in a, a study area for a, a TIA. And then I, I'll, I'll say also.
I'm sorry, could you, hold on, could you say that one more time? So you're going to tell me the busiest road we have in our entire area, you're not going to count one of the busiest neighborhoods that dump into it, light, sign, act of God, no matter what? You, you, you're going to seriously tell me that with a straight face?
Correct, that was not included as one of the study area intersections that was discussed.
So it seems to me that you guys are pretty much talking with one hand behind your back. So you're going to tell me, you're going to do the work of the 250 homes you're going to add, but you're not even going to look at the additional 500-plus that haven't even been built yet on the Massey side that are going to be added into there? We're, we're looking at another 1,500 homes, counting your, on that one road. You can't tell me that you're going to look at one intersection and not the other intersection. That's like trying to add two plus two, but leaving out two.
The, the other thing I was just going to, I was just going to mention is that the, the other part of the question was about the improvements. I, I'm thinking you were saying, Councilman Cook, about the south side of, of Dryden, but I just wanted to bring to your attention that there is a, a three-lane section that has been mentioned previously, as well as the sidewalk and bike lanes that would be put in on both sides of the widening for that three-way, excuse me, two-way left turn lane. And it, it is, there is potential that there could be a little bit of a storage area on the south side of Dryden where there's a transition back to two lanes from the three-lane section, if that makes sense, that could potentially store, store it and make it more like a, a two-stage crossing, if you will. So you pull out into that center lane and then you wait until you can see and then pull out into the, into the southbound through lane. So that's just a, sort of a side note of something that might help with that issue of pulling out and taking a left.
Okay, so, yeah, we may be confused because I'm talking about when you're on Dryden and turning left towards Dobie's Bridge, I mean, towards Indianland, there's not a center storage area on that. So you really are zero to 60 within 10 feet to try to get out of there. So again, it comes back to adding the additional cars in there in a bad curve. There's already a bad curve, and it's pretty interesting that the South Carolina DOT map that was provided, and I know it wasn't necessarily anybody on this group, but yeah, the ones that's showing in the presentation makes it look like it's a straight line, and it's the furthest thing from a straight line right at this intersection where the proposed entrances are. And for what, for Massey already does have a sidewalk that connects all the way to the church there. So, and the church is another big concern for me, especially for popular events. When we have elections, presidential elections, it is extremely challenging, number one, not necessarily the side I would pick for voting, but there's not enough parking there. People are parking on the streets. It is already very dangerous in that area, so I am struggling. As we move a little bit past my concerns on the traffic, and they are probably 90% of my concern for this development, I also have a concern with Mr. Frederick's property, that's kind of the donut hole house of them. How involved has he been with this process? And has he been communicated with throughout?
Yes, Fred and Ann Taylor have been involved. DR Horton has met with them on multiple occasions. I, I, John Holken with Kinley Horn have been at one of those meetings onsite with them at their property to talk through what the impact to their residents would be and, and working with them to get a, a scenario that they can be comfortable with as that homeowner that, you're right, is, is kind of a donut hole in this development. But yet, yes, they have been in-person conversations and, and phone calls with them.
And that speaks a lot to DR Horton and the level of professionalism that you're bringing to this, because we've seen other developers along the way who have reached out to the neighbors that they're impacting. So thank you for doing so and seeing them as a significant portion of the. Another concern that I do have, kind of from the same avenue, would be the church and how they're going to be impacted. But also, as we talk about the storage that we're providing, one of the things that is probably difficult for a TIA even to understand is that when the traffic does back up on Dobie's Bridge in this area, and it does, particularly during the peak times, as we discussed, the alternate avenue for many of the drivers ends up being those that are taking their children to school at Dobie's Bridge Elementary decide to use Massey as a cut-through. And at this point, we can't have any kind of speed bumps in there, speed humps, any ways to slow down traffic coming through there. So it becomes a significant safety hazard for the residents of that area, and I'm concerned even more so, as Jamie said, once the homes are completed and built out. And then as we look at if your property were to be annexed and added, that's just going to continue to add to it. So, yeah, again, I do say I have significant concerns with this and the fact that, you know, it is my teenager that's pulling out, it's my friend that's pulling out, and I'm really going to struggle that while you are investing and making some significant improvements, I think this road is, needs a lot more than what an extra turn lane's going to be able to do here. So thank you all for your professional presentation to us and the work that you've put into it.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Can you guys go, will there be any trails down to the river at all? I know there's some trails that have been mentioned.
John, can you speak to that?
I, I can. At this time, we don't show an actual trail down to the river. That certainly, we can talk to DR Horton about that. There's a lot of topographical fall in that area. There is a stream that comes up through that area. There's the, the neighboring property, their home is positioned almost right up against the property line, right down at the river. So it was a way, yeah, by, by way of not having a trail down to the river, was a way to not have to impact a lot more of the, the trees and the stream in that area to get down to the river, as well as, as additional buffer and, and keeping a separation from the neighbor's house that would be in close proximity of a trail to the river.
And there was some discussion with Planning Commission about whether this had any connection to the Carolina Thread Trail. And we're not aware of any plan, there certainly is not any existing trail there, we're not aware of any plans to bring that, that trail through this part of, of, of Fort Mill. But, you know, there, that certainly is something that, you know, if it does become that or, or a spur off of that trail, it's certainly be something to be, to be considered.
And council member Moody and mayor and council, and also the public, I just want to make sure everybody understands, tonight is an annexation with a rezoning request. It's not a subdivision approval. DR Horton, it was very nice of them to include this presentation, but this, this whole site plan with questions about trails and types of open space, that goes through the process of the Planning Commission. So I, I do want the, the average citizen that's watching this tonight to understand that this is not an approval of a subdivision. This is just an annexation request to come into the town limits, and with that process, they are asking for the R10 zoning. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Penelope. Let me also clarify, because I did read the Charlotte Business Journal, and I have read other articles where when a developer or an applicant comes through the Planning Commission that they believe, once they've satisfied those needs, that that gives them the approval to move forward. It does not. It must come between this council and the decision this council makes. So I want to make sure that we're clear with the general public and all of the developers and all of the developers that we would like to have a good relationship with, that there's a lengthier process than just getting through the planning commission.
Mayor Savage and, and members of, of council who, and I'm, I'm sure you all have concerns about, about the, the traffic impacts. And one of the things I'd like to maybe explore with the council is whether you would be willing to either pass us on first reading and give us an opportunity to, to, to spend some time to really dig down and, and maybe even explore expanding the scope of the TIA to address some of these concerns or allowing us to, to step back and recalibrate and, and see what, you know, what is feasible in terms of expanding the scope of that TIA to address the concerns that Councilman Cook, uh, uh, mentioned and, and that, uh, you know, obviously are, are on everyone's minds. Um, if, 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 if that is something that has value to the council, we'd like an opportunity to respond in a meaningful way with good, good information and consultation with the experts.
I would like to, and I can't answer that, again, as Mayor Savage says, I'm one of those, but I will, do think it is important that I let the others on council, as well as yourselves, know that Massey subdivision had their annual homeowner's meeting tonight. Um, happened to be scheduled in the same evening, but that there are many people on Facebook pages and within that neighborhood that are very concerned about this. So while we did not have significant public hearing, um, participation here, um, there definitely is a concern and still a concern on the process. And I've addressed this with, um, town manager as well about ways we can improve how we communicate the process of annexation. Um, but there is a lot of concern to the point that it has hit the news channels. Um, where, you know, which have been put out there because of this subdivision. So, um, just letting everybody, literally know everybody on the call knows that it's not just me as a resident of Massey. There's several people in Massey that are extremely concerned about any residential growth or really any growth along this bypass, uh, along Dobie's Bridge and even to some extent on the bypass. Um, so just kind of making sure everybody realizes there is a lot of concern out there for any residential developments in this area.
Agreed, and, and I think that's missing from, you know, it's, it's easy for all of us to dig in where we are. Um, but I do think that the, the people that aren't present tonight, um, that have made phone calls or have sent emails. You know, we have to represent the whole of our community. And for me, um, you know, not having anyone at a meeting, i- i- it's not surprising anymore. So, um, you know, I'm, I'm not sure that delaying is going to be, council, I will, I will follow what your desire would be on this particular item.
And I would just like to raise one more item, um, and, and make sure it was, it wasn't misinterpreted. Uh, I was not indicating that the Tanners were on board with our development when I mentioned that we had talked with them. They do have concerns. Um, they do not anticipate, they do not expect to give up their driveway. Um, so I just, I wanna make sure that I wasn't misleading that conversation with you all. They are concerned about it as they should be, but we have made, we have made continued conversations with them and, and continue to talk about this plan and, and trying to come to a solution that works for them as well.
I certainly applaud your, your saying that and, and putting that out there. Thank you.
Not, not many developers would do that.
No.
They would not, y'all. I've seen it where, uh, on Dobie's Bridge where a developer, um, cut down some people's streets and they own their property, right? And so I commend you for doing that because ninety-nine percent of the people that are doing development in this area wouldn't.
Larry, you had a comment?
Yes, uh, this is a longer, different subject, uh.
Do you?
I don't understand why, if you come in and build a development, when I ride through, all I see is a great, a bunch of great big quiet garage doors staring at me. Is it possible to paint or, I'm, I'm looking at the three houses that you have.
We would have to go back and reorient an ordinance to ask that the garage doors be side loaded, which broadens the size of the lot. And right now, ordinance doesn't call for that.
I just wonder why you can't paint it a different color.
Okay, all right.
So is a motion?
Um, the motion is to approve.
Approve annexation.
Annex.
Which I'm all about annexing. I think the bigger footprint we can make Fort Mill, the bigger share we get at the table when it comes to talking to Rock Hill, RFATs and all the other people like that. I have total, I, I am way concerned about the traffic on Dobie's as it stands and to add this other development in there. And unfortunately, they're not stopping. The building is not gonna stop. I mean, we dropped the ball thirty years ago on Dobie's Bridge. That should have been taken care of a long time ago. Um, I would like to see an expansion on their traffic study. I mean, they haven't even taken into consideration that Harris Teeter's going at the top of the street. You, you think traffic's screwed up now? Yeah, or the new school. I mean, you think it's gonna be a debacle now? Wait until those two entities get moved in. And then you're gonna add that house in there. Then you got another five hundred houses out of Massey. Then you're gonna add the other, what's, what's that, River Chase? You're gonna add all that? I mean, which I know is on the other side of Dobie's, but it's all feeding into that same intersection. It's gonna be a mess. It'll be a hot mess.
Yeah, do we know too that if we say no, they won't go to the county and the county?
When I asked David Hunsford that on the phone the other day, he said the county doesn't have water.
I, I believe when we say no, it, it will be a, it would be virtually impossible for them to get water and sewer, uh, because the county can't provide it.
Of course, you've got Massey over there, is it?
Well, they just. Massey's in the town.
Massey's in the town.
Mayor?
Trudy? Yes, sir.
Mayor. This is Barry.
Hey, Mayor.
I've been lis-, I've been listening here for two hours and nineteen minutes and twenty-one seconds.
You and me too.
I know. Um, I'm reading between the lines here and I'm, and y'all do what you wanna do, but the last comments that Mr. Blue made, I believe are important. And, and I wanna throw this out to council just, just for, you know, information before there's a vote. I think Mr. Blue is asking for, I guess, some feedback as to whether or not there is an opportunity for this project to move forward. I think we all know, I think we all know that if this vote is taken, it impairs their ability to move forward from, from this point for a period of time.
I agree.
So I didn't know, I didn't know if, and, and, and Dan can jump back on here and, and, and say his piece, but if there's a possibility for some kind of deferral on this, on this motion or, you know, a possibility of reconsidering it to that extent, then I want the, to council to consider that before they actually take a vote.
Mary, thank you for, for clarifying that because that, that is exactly what I'm, what I'm, what I'm asking at this point. Um, you know, I, I, I think that there is a, there's an inflection point with projects like this. And either there is a path forward or there just is not gonna be ever a path forward. And what I'm asking is that if there's a path forward, we sure want an opportunity to try to get there. Um, there's a lot of, there, there's a lot of work that needs to be done on Dobie's Bridge Road. DR Horton is committing to do some of it. I think that they are willing to, uh, look at the TIA, maybe expand the scope of it to include some of these intersections we've been talking about, to maybe address that and give you some more comfort that, that, that we're, we're not making things worse. We're, uh, hopefully making things better, but, but that's, that's really what we're trying to, to get to is, you know, i- i- is, is there a yes under any circumstances out there that we could, that, that we could reach? Um, yeah, and, and, and again, you know, y'all are the ones that have to make this decision and live with the decision, but we, we feel like we're coming to you something with, with something that is, A, it's, it's consistent with your comprehensive plan that you just amended. B, it, it adds value off-site that none of these other projects apparently have, have done much of. Um, it's, it's lower density than, than is allowed. It's, you know, if you're gonna allow residential development, it seems to me that this is something that should, that, that hopefully the council would, would give some consideration to. Not that you have to commit to approve it, but give us an opportunity to, to really explore to see if there is that path forward.
I am, uh, going to choose my words carefully, which is odd for me. Um, but carefully, I believe that it is just as wrong, Dan, to allow another thirty days if this council will not support the building at this point and time on Dobie's. It is not that Fort Mill is not welcoming, as is evidenced by the number of buildings that have occurred in Fort Mill. It is not from a lack of effort on this council's part to be more restrictive in our ordinances as we did away with our five, which I believe was the original request. We do know the law and we can't just say yay or nay without foundation. We can't stop growth without foundation. This is a particular project in a particular location that there are grave concerns in regards to. So to give deference to the care that you folks have put into your presentation, I will open the floor for a motion to defer if council so desires. We will vote on that and then we will return to the original motion of whether to approve the annexation or not. Council members, do any of you have a desire to make a motion to defer the decision on this project? I have no motion. You will, then we have to go to the original motion, which was to approve the annexation. Please be careful in your thoughts. These folks have put a lot of effort, a lot of work and a lot of money into their preparation. But we've also heard a great deal of concern in regards to the location on Dobie's and the traffic. I will call for the vote. The vote that you will make will either be a yay to support the motion to annex or a nay to deny. Does everyone understand how this vote would be, okay? Does that make sense to everybody? I'm gonna call for the vote. The vote, all those in favor, please show of hands and voice a, a yay. We have one. All those opposed, please show of hands and voice nay. Nay. The majority of council has ruled to deny this request for annexation of this property. And an effort was made to give council the right to defer it for a future decision. Thank you. We will now move to new business item number three, a resolution to approve sixteenth Circuit Traffic Enforcement Mutual Aid Agreement. Sergeant Philip Harold is our expert. Do I have a motion?
Move to accept new business item number three.
I have a motion to accept and a second. Is Sergeant Harold with us?
Yes, Mayor, I'm with you.
Hey, Mayor, nice to have you this evening. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, ma'am.
Um, I'm familiar with the mutual aid agreement. Um, council members, are you? Do you need Sergeant Harold to help with any question in regards to what that looks like?
I'd like a brief description of.
Sergeant Harold, could you do that for a couple of council members?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, this mutual aid agreement request is, will allow the town of Fort Mill Police Department to participate in mutual aid for the purposes of checkpoint enforcement and traffic control. Uh, the traffic control portion of the mutual aid will assist us with projects, especially the upcoming I-77 bridge construction project, which allows us to form a mutual aid agreement with the Rock Hill City, South Carolina Patrol in York County to assist with traffic control in that area also.
All right. I think, uh, what Sergeant Harold has addressed could not be at any better time than right now as we are looking to the bridge, uh, twenty-one seventy-seven bridge into Rock Hill being, um, worked on in, in May. We're going to need to provide support, uh, everywhere for the traffic that's going to be a problem, uh, from that reconstruction and repair. So, uh, this mutual aid agreement, and, and I think we've been on the receiving end of mutual aid as well. So I'm, I'm a huge proponent of working, uh, with other agencies. So anyone have any additional questions in regards to this item? Nope, the motion on the table is to approve. And we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Okay, that's an approval on new business item number three. New business item number four, reconsideration of resurfacing tennis courts at the Fort Mill YMCA at the complex. Davy Broome, do I have a motion?
I move to accept new business item number four.
Have a motion to accept.
Second.
And a second. Davy?
Thank you, Mayor. All right, so this is a reconsideration, um, of resurfacing tennis courts at the Fort Mill YMCA. Um, staff came to you back in, um, September with two proposals, um, to renovate the current tennis courts in their location that they are currently. And/or, or just/or, um, renovate or in their current location and then construct or new additional courts and make them actually in a row, in a line. That was based off of a rendering by ESP Associates. Um, it, it was taking, uh, a piece of property and utilizing as much space as possible. Uh, during the first phase, when we had actually put the, uh, tennis courts out for bid for resurfacing them in their current location, uh, this rendering came about, um, thought, take a look at what it would cost to, uh, line all of these tennis courts up in a row. Uh, we reached back out to the same company that actually won the bid, um, Court One, and asked them what it would cost to renovate or, and then construct or new courts. Uh, the price, the price they provided us, uh, was three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars and I think thirty-two dollars addition to that. Council voted then to move forward with that process with, uh, for new courts and for renovating full course in their current location. Upon, um, that vote, staff met with the contractor. That's when they provided us, uh, the quote they provided did not, it was just renovating or building four new courts on a site that has already been graded, ready to go, site ready. And they were just constructing courts and the fencing along with it. That did not meet or fall within our, uh, proposed budget for the overall project. So this was right around the time when, um, the season for actually constructing these courts, um, or renovating courts was ending based on the weather. Um, the, the companies for, that, uh, install tennis courts do it typically between the months of spring, around the March timeframe to around the September, October, November timeframe. So we missed that window of opportunity there. During that timeframe, there's also a discussion came about, uh, if we wanna look at renovating courts, we need restrooms in that site as well because the tennis program we had, the recreational use, uh, everyone was required to actually walk from the rear of the building where the current location of the tennis courts are, all the way around the front of the building to use the restroom. So, um, there was a discussion about having, uh, what it would take to have a restroom included in this project and what it would cost. So, um, three options have been come about. My staff have met with a contractor. We, we've, uh, contracted with ESP and Associates, ESP Associates provided a, a site survey. And we reached out to a lighting contractor, um, to try to pull these costs together to give you a more accurate view of what it would entail to, uh, either renovate the course and/or some portion of that, constructing some other, uh, some other portion of other courts, excuse me, along with the restroom facility. So all three options, again, include a restroom facility. Option one. Option one was, is resurfacing six and a half courts in their current location, which includes the restroom. Costs associated with that, we've reached out to the contractor who's still willing to honor their original bid. They won the lowest bid of two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars to install or renovate the courts in their current locations. They did state that based on the age of the courts, the cracks have been there for a while, they're not sure about the base and what type and shape it's in. They could possibly have to add some cement stabilization if it's a poor base system, which would be fifty-five thousand, five hundred dollars. The restroom facility we took, the restroom that we currently are just recently completed at the Calhoun Street Park, which is part of the Walker Wild Russia Park overall project. The cost for that restroom facility was two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, and it was two restrooms, excuse me, it's three restrooms and a supply closet. We felt that we could use that same footprint or similar to it at that same cost to provide two restrooms, family-style restrooms, a tennis office, and a supply room. So, you're looking at another four rooms, but two family-style restrooms. The location that, for the restroom site, based on the sewer on the property, sewer lateral on the property, the best location we could determine would be just in front of, or between the parking lot in this rendering, or this overview, overhead shot, between parking lot and the half-court. There's enough space there for this restroom facility that allows the smaller parking lot that was one part of the original discussions to be utilized, again, as whether parking or another opportunity. So, again, we're trying to utilize as much space as possible on this site. Because of there's no close sewer connections in this area, it will require us to run a new sewer lateral, which would cost about ten thousand dollars. It would need to be forced, so you'd need a grinder pump that would cost about fifteen thousand dollars. Again, water services, five thousand dollars to get water to that site. And there would be some restructuring of the parking lots to add for ADA spacing. For this quote, I also, after meeting with the lighting contractor, the lights that are out there now are working. So, they're working fine. Poles need to be refurbished, whether it's sanded, sandblasted, painted. But the lights are working in their current location. But they also provide us quotes for new LED, a retrofitted lighting head to be used with the poles we have. So, I, for that purpose, I added it to this this amount, but keep in mind, we could always, we go with option one, we could still use the current lighting that's out there. But the retrofitting for the lighting would increase the amount to a hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars, increase it by a hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. If we decided, or if you decided to go with all new lighting and poles, so you just need to add an additional forty-five thousand dollars to that hundred-and-sixty. In the quote, renovating the courts in their current location, the contractor would remove the fencing, the posts, renovate the courts, and reinstall that same fencing and post back in its current location. It would, but you would get new netting and all that for the courts. If you wanted to go with all new fencing, it would be an additional sixty-three thousand dollars. So, I did include the options in the itemized amounts or the amounts I provided. So, in order to provide option one, the overall cost, the projections are eight-hundred thousand, five hundred dollars. We built in a ten percent contingency, just as a, you know, we followed every possible charge we could. But again, we're not, just want to make sure we build in enough buffer there that we can general, of resurfacing courts, building restroom facility to our liking and our expectation. So, the overall cost for this project, we anticipate, would be eight-hundred-and-eighty thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. Again, keep in mind, there's also, there's opportunities there to save money based on lighting, and we may experience some some reduction in the cost for the restroom facility itself. Option two would be to actually go back to our previous plan of renovating four courts in their current location and constructing four new courts, which would essentially line the eight courts up in a row. Based on this, this discussion, the state stormwater guidelines and laws, if you have land disturbance of over an acre, you have to upgrade your stormwater pond system. We have a brand-new pond there. But the additional cost could see up to one-hundred thousand dollars just in the stormwater upgrade itself. So, in the itemized breakdown of the cost for this facility, you're looking at, again, you're restoring four courts, building four courts, the sewer lateral, all of, for the restroom facility, the sewer lateral, the demo pavement and replacement, grinder pump, water lateral, all of that stays the same. I went ahead and included lighting at the full cost of two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars because if you're building four new courts, you're gonna have to have lighting. We only have enough lighting to go with six courts. So, we would have to have brand-new lighting out there. And if you're, if you're renovating an entire facility, it's the all, there's a different looking, kind of uniform look within the entire project. So, that's where the two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars come from. There are going to be grading costs to get the site ready for the construction of the courts. That's in excess of fifteen thousand dollars. And then the additional cost with moving earth, soil import, mobilization for the grading, erosion control, I've already spoke about that, but removing the topsoil. All of those costs together, including in that, we would need to relocate a three-phase pavement transformer, a dual-kinetric pavement transformer, which is behind the half-court. All of those costs came to approximately one, one million, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, five hundred and thirty-two. Ten percent contingency brings that to one-point-three-seven-five million dollars, a little over that. So, that is option two, if we, again, put all of the courts in a row. Third option is doing away with the two upper courts, renovating four of the courts in their current location and constructing two courts where the site of the half-court is. Again, a lot of the costs are the same with the other options. The resurfacing of the courts, we quit that quote and it changed it to a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars based on, from six and a half to four, to four courts. We added the two courts at a cost of a hundred-and-twelve thousand dollars. Again, the restroom facility and all of the sewer laterals, the pavement demo, grinder pump, water lateral. Then we, again, I added the retrofit lighting for the refurbishing of poles. We could, again, save that money. We have poles on site at the two upper courts. If we could just relocate those poles and lighting, there would be some costs associated with that, but it would not be at the full one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars that was projected. And so, again, with the soil importing, you're going to be removing topsoil, new fencing, if you're going to put brand-new fencing up for two brand-new courts, you probably want to be a uniform look with the other four courts. So, I added in the fencing there. And again, the relocation of three-phase pavement transformer. Again, the option is to, a forty-five thousand dollars, we want to go with all new lighting and poles. So, for option three, the projected cost is nine-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars with a ten percent contingency, which brings it to one million, one-hundred-and-eighteen, excuse me, one million, eighteen thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-five. I will say for option three, well, option one and three, really. Whether we renovate the course in their current location or do provide option three, where we're building only two courts, it's still, we still have the land available to construct two more courts in the future. It's there. So, if you go with option one, we still in the future could actually add the four courts, two at a time, or all four at one time, in the, any time in the future. Because where the restroom is located is not, is not going to change that opportunity to do that. So, these are the three options that we brought back to you. The courts, I've been out there meeting with contractors. I've been out there reviewing the site over the last several months, whether it's in the wintertime or springtime. They're being used every day. And it's even in the shape that they're in. And they're in, they're in really poor shape. Something needs to be done with them, whether it's renovating them or we're not funding this project. But I will say, it is, just from my experience, it is a, they're used quite frequently. So, I bring these to you for your thoughts, and if you would like to move forward with any option.
Can we get back to option one a second, please, on the screen?
Can we go, can we go back to option one on the screen? Thank you.
I'm looking at that picture. It's just helpful to visualize what's there. Where in this photo where the, and I saw the conceptual drawing, but where would the restrooms be, kind of like where the parking?
Where the half lot is, or the half-court is.
Yeah, that half-court is, all right. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding it.
Yes, that's the layout. If you look on option two and three, where the two new courts on the right are, you'll see that box in front of them.
Right.
That's the restrooms.
Okay, all right, I see it now. All right, okay, thank you.
One of the important parts about the restroom facility is that, you know, even though the ball fields are going away, there's still an entrance to the greenway, and a number of people park in that parking lot and access the greenway from that location. So, it would certainly be a service to those using more than just the tennis court.
Right.
I also think it's important to note, with the daycare situation at the complex, many times during the summer, they'll bring those kids out. I've seen our fire trucks over there doing a slip and slide with them. There are other camps, and for a group, I don't know about you, but I've worked at camps as a kid. And for you as a leader to have to take one child to the restroom, you're leaving fifteen. Yeah, and you're having to walk them all the way around the complex to get in, and then down the hallway to the restroom, and you're leaving the other kids unattended. So, I think the restroom is absolutely...
I don't think the restroom, the restroom's a no-brainer. I guess my question is, when you're having a tournament, because I don't know anything about tennis outside of your little yellow ball, what is the better scenario? Having the courts in a straight line, or having the courts in a L shape?
It doesn't matter, the shape. Eight courts allows you to have better tournaments. But right now, to be honest with you, if I could go out there tonight with a shovel and we could just fix the ones we have, I'd be thrilled. Because the cracks are this way. This way, the nets are half holes in them.
And Mayor, I'd like to speak before...
There's a race going in them too, haven't we?
Four decisions made. Just for timeline of each option, for option one, you know, we could, if we move forward with option one, we can contact the Court One tomorrow. They put in their queue, so they could go ahead and get started, get us at least in their schedule to renovate the courts. We would, we would still need to go through our procurement process of town for the restroom and the lighting for that, if we decided to go with a different style of lighting. But we would have to go through the procurement process of the restroom. So, on the, on the printout or the information I sent you up, put the completion date of the first quarter of 2022. That would be for the overall project. Tennis courts, I believe, we'll possibly get them in this, this season. So, tennis courts are ready to go, but the restrooms may take a little long, longer to construct. For option two, we have to go back to the drawing board for the procurement process, because now we're bringing in constructing, moving her. That's going to, we would have to put it up for a thirty-day bid process, go through a public bid opening, vet those quotes and bids, and then move forward. So, I do not believe we were able to complete the tennis court work within this time, this season, whether we go with option two or option three. I do believe if we're all, all three options work well, we could, can make them happen. But for the quickest opportunity to renovate the course, option one is our best bet for this year.
What did we previously approved?
We previously approved option two. But what we approved of that was three-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand, two dollars.
It's not a complete estimate.
But in all truth, that erosion pond was, is at the bare minimum of its function as it is. So, we're eventually gonna have to tackle that thing when it comes down to line. Either now, either do it, either rip the Band-Aid off now and do it, or do it later. It's not something we're gonna dodge.
I agree, but according to St. John Stormwater regulations, if you do not have more than an acre of disturbance, you do not have to move forward with these, with these upgrades. It's when you, when you eclipse an acre of land disturbance and in the...
And that's what the other options would be, disturbing more land acreage.
Yeah, if you look at option three, the two courts are less than an acre. So, we would not, it would not, we would not have to do anything to upgrade the stormwater system outside of, there's a storm drain already in that location. We would have to relocate it, but that was factored into the cost of the courts. But option two, both locations combined would be over an acre of land disturbance. I would like to go ahead and also provide the two upper courts, we would need to, whether we, whichever option we go with, we would need to shut them down for a time, for a period of time. It would be my recommendation to do that, and not include the demolition of those courts in this project. That would add to that land disturbance. So, you know, maybe we find another way to repurpose those facilities for a, you know, a short period of time until we decide we want to.
Could they be used for pickleball? So, there's two undisturbed, so we talked about adding, talking about adding pickleball as an option.
Yes, and I'd like to make known, I had come to this meeting tonight believing option one was right. However, I had a meeting last week with mayors from TDK, Rock Hill. They're converting some of their courts into pickleball courts because of demand. So, yes, the two upper courts could be pickleball courts. They'd still have to be resurfaced because till Larry Spork grass is growing, there're craters in the courts. So, you know, it's, it's at a point of, we need to decide what we'd like to do and get on it because the longer we mull it over and over and over, it just keeps pushing it. We're kicking the can.
Like a lot of them. And I'm only one person, but the more courts you have, you can utilize them for other things. I mean, I'm not the Parks and Rec Committee. I've never been to committee. I'm glad I'm on more, so, actually.
Should be.
You all have a lot, you know.
You do have a lot.
I appreciate the members on that committee because that, in my opinion, is probably the most difficult committee because there's so many moving parks, right? That we have to deal with it. Can we play pickleball on a half-court? I'm asking, asking out of Dillon County ignorance here. So, I didn't know what that was till a year ago.
Davey, Davey, and it's really growing. It is the fastest-growing sport in the country. Davey and I talked today about perhaps if we did option one, we take down the backboard and turn that and make a pickleball court there. But I do think we have to have an eye to the future, and I got Jamie's point. We can't keep avoiding because then we don't get it done. And we've promised and planned a two-story gym at some point. And Lisa has finagled, moved, written, rewritten plans. Yes, we really just have to make up our mind what we want to do and what... Yes, we really just have to make up our mind what we want to do and at what point in time so that decisions like this aren't A, B, or C. They're A because they support C. We're, we're not doing the planning in a way that I'm satisfied.
I, I, I'm only one person, but I, I think we're going to do this, let's utilize and Fort Mill deserves the best. I think we should go for A. That's just my opinion. I mean, you can all utilize.
You're gonna, you're gonna have to pick an option, buddy. A doesn't answer the question. Option two or option three?
I said eight.
Eight courts.
Eight courts?
Option two. Four, lower, construct four and A.
Can we fund that? Because I hate voting on an option that we haven't decided how we're going to pay for.
That would be my question.
It would come out of our capital projects fund, which we could fund that. We have spent considerable funds out of that capital projects in our most recent project, Wild Lash Park, Bank Athletic Park. We did set aside five hundred thousand dollars for this particular project. And there's another five million dollars for upgrades to the.
Bank.
The Y M C A complex, any, any, any upgrades we are required to provide to that facility as far as the maintenance of the building. We do have some, we're going to spend some money this year for upgrades. We just recently renovated the root system in the whirlpool area. So whirlpool room itself now, Y M C A paid to paint the walls and fix the floor. We fixed the ceiling because the ceiling was in disrepair or in bad shape when we took over the facility. So we have spent some funds out of that five hundred thousand dollars. Now it, it's going to be, we, we can fund it, but it's, it's just how much do we want to fund out of?
I'd like to, I'd like to add just a little context too. When we went out and accepted the complex, we knew the building was not new. And we did it in partnership with the Y for our operations, the school district for the really great pool that they've built. I am so pleased with the Y that they're investing money for paint, for carpet, for all new equipment in the weight room, all new. They've put out new playground equipment for the children that needed desperately to be updated. So everybody's making, we're making, it's just unfortunate that the money we've spent to date, you can't see it. You know, because we're having to fix things that weren't working properly. Yes. So, you know, that's kind of sad because you can't walk out there and go, wow, that's new and that looks great. Because it's hard to view an H V A C unit like that or a roof.
Or a heater for a pool.
Or a heater for a pool. But.
Oh, you have a new boiler.
Yes. But I do see others coming to the table and making an investment in exactly what we hoped it would be. A renovated, beautiful location for all ages to participate in healthy exercise in some way. So I'm pleased by that. I, I'm, I'm very happy because sometimes those things don't get noticed. And I'm grateful that we have partners in this. So in that, I just feel for the program, you know, because we're going to interrupt them. We need to see if there's a, a location we could buddy up with so they could continue the program while we're doing whatever we're doing. And we do need to pull them into this discussion. And then I'm, I'm sort of torn between get it done quick so it's done or do it right. Because I know there's a time in the very near future, we're going to have to do a bond or find a way to fund a new gym with a walking trail inside and some other upgrades to perhaps reorient the entrance or whatever we're going to do, we're going to have to do that. So just keep all that in mind and to Jamie's point, let's make sure we know where we're headed and do it as we can get it done instead of just kicking it down the road.
I feel very strongly along the lines you're talking about as well, well as Jamie, that having the actual complete vision of what we're trying to do at that facility versus the patchwork fixes. We've done patchwork fixes for the inside because we, again, we had to.
Had to.
We had to. It had to be done. And it's been a great partnership with all those involved. But I think the future vision of what the facility will be also deserves that partnership and that opportunity of collaboration with the Y. The Y has ways of raising money as well. Granted, I'm not cutting this on down, but I think it's worth the collaborative effort for us all to look at what we see this whole site being for us. As simple as two hundred and fifty thousand for restrooms, much needed. We all said right here, we need restrooms. But if the entrance ends up being on that side, as we've looked at it as just an option, if we flip it, you know, could those restrooms be on the outside wall of an existing building? For example, similar to what you had talked about before, where it currently is. But if we've got a gym in that space, where the, I don't know what court we want to call it, but the lone duck court that's there. Yeah. If a gym ends up being in that space, you could put a restroom out, the right side's right there. Does that help us? I don't know. Again.
But I've come, I've come to believe there are other places for the gym.
I, I don't disagree. Again, I've taken my squares and moved them in many different places around this facility.
And boxes of cookies, move them around.
Does that have to be at that facility? Can we not use the gym? Why does it have to be there? Is there any other area in town we can build?
Already an indoor facility for us. So.
I'm saying, I think that.
It's energy of operations.
And it'd be, it'd be technically cheaper to add to that building than to build a standalone, independent.
I'm not on the mince. I've never been to meetings.
That's a good question.
No, it's a great question. It's just running all the utilities alone and everything where we're just tapping in as opposed to running new is.
Well, and it's, we, we talked earlier years back of noting, you know, where we put ball fields and we put the, uh, indoors.
Well, and even if we don't put the gym in where that lone duck court is, that gives space for a whole nother rec field.
Or something else.
Or something else.
Or potentially pickleball. Yeah. I mean, there's.
Whatever.
There's a lot of options and I think it's a matter of, it's a matter of, you know, sitting down and what maybe is done for us here and say, here's our three best options and the costs and time associated with it. How quickly can we do it? You know, I would have a meeting tomorrow and us with E S P or whomever would be involved and take my boxes and let's move them around, similar to what was done with Aquatic Center, finding the best location for everything we want to get out of here. Again, maximizing the opportunity of operations of this facility to be what we want it, whether it's a gym slash tennis facility, tennis slash pickleball, whatever. Or plus the fitness side of it. I mean, it's amazing and I'm now a member of, you know, the Y. And, you know, I love the operations and the programs they offer.
Do a great job.
Again, I would love the opportunity, before we make a decision on this, to be able to say, let's get a holistic picture and bring counsel, two or three options of the facility.
But then.
But isn't it time? I, I.
Kicking the can down the road even more.
I, I can't live with, with.
I mean, Gwen, when you, Ed and Kate, Neil's tennis stuff, I mean, when you go to Rock Hill or tournaments, you, I think you play.
I do.
I mean, do they mostly have six or six and a half courts? Half courts is pretty common around state. I mean, I've never, you know, or is it more eight?
You can make, it's more eight, but you can make do with six because you're usually playing four sets of doubles and two sets of singles. It's just how to run it. You know, you look at, T K K's got upper courts and lower courts and they have more, they have eight plus. They have a very good tennis association.
I would love to have eight. That's, I'm one person.
And we'd love to have a bunch of upper fields and everything else too. So I, I think part of what the decision as a council in the South is, we have to decide, six versus eight to me is, do you want to be in the business of tourism? Or do you want to support, or do you just want to support Parks and Rec that be, try to make some funding off of being part of a tournament? So like the baseball fields with that, that is rich park. That's not really big enough to run a whole tournament, but it does get pitched with other facilities too. You could somewhat do that. But again, to Gwen's point, I want to be sure we're protecting the program with what we have now.
You interrupted it could die.
Yes.
That's all I'm saying. And for me, I think this is very beneficial discussion and one that we've bordered on and bounced against and dribbled a bunch of times to use the right analogy. But I would, I would prefer, if it were me making the decision for us to move forward, get the six right. We can always add more. I want the restroom and the safety of those courts protected. But I also agree with you, Lisa. We need a plan on how we're going to move forward. But by George, once we vote on it, that's, we're going to stick to it. I'm, I'm literally going to be adamant that once we voted on a direction, we need to stick with it until we finish it. You know, and we've had a couple of things change, like with the Bank Street Gym. You know, we've had a couple of things that have shifted that caused us to have to make shifts. But it, we ought to take advantage of that timing and do something good, do something nice. I don't think the costs are going to be as high because we did, Davey and I talked about, we overestimated on the restroom facility. It doesn't have to be brick because it wouldn't match the complex. You know, so there's some things in there that we wouldn't have to spend as much. But I appreciate coming in under budget is always a good thing. Ahead of schedule and under budget, that's music to my ears.
If you look at option one, where would the additional two courts down the road be? Where this half court is? Is that where?
And down.
I want to make sure I'm understanding it all.
I think option three is going to get us all happy. That gives all the courts redone. That gives us one more new court plus the restroom facility. And it's only less than two hundred grand more. And then that still gives us the option for the other court on the far side where we have to do the retention pond. That gets everything out, that gets everything fixed. That gets us to eight. That gets us to tournament size. And then, as Lisa said, we can sit with E S P. I still, I like the one, the first one they gave us where the gym sat there, but whatever, it doesn't matter. And then to say, look, this is what we need. This is what we want and working it all fit and then go from there.
Option three though, only resurfaces the four in line and adds two, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. Resurfaces all, all six big courts and then builds a new court where the half court is.
Doesn't do the two bottoms. The two bottom ones are not included in anything on number three.
So they're just going to sit like how it is? Number, number three would be the two, the, the four lower courts would be renovated.
The four on the right.
Yeah.
So these four. This guy's left off in the lynch.
Those are the upper courts. Those are the play over there.
Right.
What would it take to add the upper court to that, to option three?
That'd be option two. And option two, the only one with eight courts.
Would you go back to the first?
Well, yeah, option two is building a whole new.
Work the first.
I'm just saying, refinish these, these and build that guy.
There we go. So the two upper courts that bears to the gym would just, we would not use those any longer. We would renovate the four courts down low. And then where the half court is, we would construct another court and a half. So essentially making two courts in that site. That would be option three, I believe.
Why aren't we refinishing the upper court?
I was wondering too.
Refinishing which one?
The upper court.
So we would have eight courts.
That was not an option I would ask to provide. If the eight courts would have been the eight in a row.
By me?
We can certainly provide that to you, but it's, you're going to look at two hundred and sixty thousand dollars plus.
I like that habit.
So you're looking at, if you wanted to renovate the six courts, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. You're going to build two more, hundred and twelve thousand dollars. And then all of the costs associated with the, with the restroom. So.
So we're still coming in really close to option three numbers. Actually, we're at the contingency number. So then add ten percent to a million, eighteen. So we're around one.
That'd give us eight courts.
That'd give us eight courts and that gets us right around with the, with the ten percent contingency, right around one, one, a little bit more than one, one. Which is cheaper than option two, but better than option one.
Chris, Lisa, Trudy, Ronnie, Larry.
I'm giving it up.
I'm not against.
This meeting is, we're on the limits of my met.
I understand.
Do we want to? Em, Ron, Ron.
I know what you were going to say.
I'm not against it. The only concern I have is where would we put a gym? And being able to make sure that we have another location on site to be able to do it, which we think there is. But I am not a professional. I did not stay at a Holiday Inn Express last night. And I would love for somebody like E S P to say, yes, here are two other options for a gym.
Davey.
Yes.
Could you, sorry. Could you set up a meeting next week, either Tuesday or Wednesday of next week with E S P to discuss what Jamie proposed and thoughts about where the gym would or could go?
Yes, ma'am.
If you can do that, then in our next two, two weeks from now, we'll make a decision.
I agree.
We, we'll make a decision.
Yeah, I feel very much.
If we don't make a decision, we're not making one. Put it that way.
Yeah, we'll blow them up.
Yeah. In the meantime, it gives staff an opportunity to take the option that is raised and put some costs associated with that to give them.
Can we do that, please?
Four options.
Okay.
We'd like to do that.
All right.
The only thing I see that is something from the tennis court options that we've got on here is that we had talked about potential picnic shelter.
Yes.
Again, I know that's fairly simple to add. But as we're looking at spacing, being able to have some type of an area, whether it's work ceremonies or the kids eating their lunches or a break from the sign.
Daycare would love it.
Yeah. So it may be to the left at the bottom too. It may be somewhere else.
I'd agree. And there was some, you know, I didn't list it, but you know, we felt like with the contingency there, we were looking at shading options and things like that. So.
Two weeks and a meeting before, right?
Yes.
Thank you. So how do we resolve that we have a motion and a second on the table? All those that will vote, the motion was to approve the reconsideration. So we're fine. All those in favor of directing Davey to go back for this reconsideration, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much. Davey, thank you. I'm sorry. Okay. New business item number five. Consideration of co-funding Winthrop Service Project with Fort Mill Economic Partners. Davey is one of the resources. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion accepting the business item number five.
Do I have a second? All right. I'm going to do the explanation on this one. Davey and I meet with the Economic Development Partners monthly. Uh, Larry sits on, their board is, does Jamie is, are you a board member? A board member as well. And one of the things that they have done was to try to bring in Winthrop University into our Economic Development Group and they did. And we've been looking at potentially, how could we work together on a project? Well, recently you might've read about The Perch in Rock Hill. It's the old Coca-Cola company on Cherry Road that Warren Norman is developing. One of the classes, it's an annual effort with some of the classes at Winthrop to take on a community project and use the class time. It becomes their syllabus. To use the students to do research and development and work towards making available information. It's like hiring a contractor. And they worked with The Perch and it was, it was phenomenal, the work that they were able to provide and help with that project. So when the Fort Mill Economic Partners met with Davey and I, they said, you know, do we have a project here in Fort Mill that we might benefit from that? So we talked about our desire to connect the hiking trails, the Nation Ford Land Trust Trails through downtown and over to the Sprat property. And then again, after Lennar's development, over to the river and connect at the bridge where the trail system would connect all the way with Riverwalk. They love the idea so much at Winthrop that they want to put three classes and two professors on that. They charge so that they can pay for whatever they need to move forward with it. It's twelve thousand dollars. The Economic Development Partners asked us, would we split it? And for six thousand, I promise you, we could not hire a temp to come in. And for six thousand, I promise you, we could not hire a temp to come in and do the type of work. They'll do what we ask of them. We set the agenda to say, this is what we are attempting to do, here's what we need to know, and they will work to our request. Now, they're going to go out and research hot and heavy, and they already are working with, um, The Greenway and doing some similar research and work at The Greenway, and they're very successful at that. So I think for six thousand dollars, it's a wonderful opportunity for us to partner with Winthrop, to use a known entity that's already making a difference at The Greenway and did with the development in Rock Hill off Cherry Road. So I, um, I support the motion to bring them in and let them take this on as a project and present the data to us. Questions?
I love coordinating with educational partners, so whether it's our schools, our schools are phenomenal themselves, but partnering with Winthrop, yes, I think it's, um, it is a project that we have been looking for, some type of leadership to manage and run. So I'm excited about having a group that's excited about doing it, I love seeing it on their resume. Um, I think it's the perfect partnership. My question, too, granted, if it's only six grand, where do we get the money? Um, I think we can find that in a contingency, calling a charter.
Professional services.
Yes, exactly. Second portion of it, who would manage this project from staff's viewpoint? And would it go under a committee? Um, it seems very logical to go under Parks and Rec type of things, but it potentially could go under, I think we've got another group, maybe.
I think we'll, yeah.
How, how do we make this happen? So we're good at saying, yes, we want it, how do we make it happen?
I think Penelope has been working with John Gordon, with The Greenway, on our desire to link the two trails to date. Is that correct, Davey?
Yes.
So I think she's a natural fit to work with this. I think we probably should have a committee meeting to talk about, what could that look like? And maybe give some additional support to what parameters need to be set. So I'm willing to do that, but I do think Penelope has already invested and is working very well, uh, with The Greenway on that. So I'm kind of, does that suit you?
Yeah, that is very, I'm on it, but I also have that strategic plan draft that I did a little bit of, that just got some notes. So just a one-page slide that I'm going to go.
Perfect. I just think this is a good opportunity for us, and, and to work with Winthrop, it just does my heart good. So I'm, I'm really happy about it.
I, I have met this professor, and I've been very impressed with him.
Good, good. Any further questions before we call the vote? Jamie, you got any questions?
No, I'm good, I'm happy about this. I think this is going to bring some fresh blood into the mix.
Yeah.
And maybe even some potential hires for later on in the future for the town.
Absolutely.
And if it works well, we keep doing the project every year, so.
I love it.
Or every other, depending on how big the project is.
I love it. All right, let's call for the vote. The motion on the table is to support, uh, the service project with Economic Development Partners and Winthrop. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, nay. Thank you. Larry, you're up next. New business item number six, approval of the ad hoc appointments committees recommended appointments to the Planning Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, and Historic Review Board.
Okay, we're the three of us now, and, uh.
I think we need to do a motion.
Make a motion to accept new business item number six.
I second. Go, Larry, sorry. Yes, sir.
Uh, we, we met, and the last couple of times we've met, if we have a problem, it's that we have too many really good qualified, we have to get the most qualified of the qualified people. But we had two openings on the Board of Zoning Appeals, uh, one with a vacancy, the other one, uh, we voted to reappoint Terry Murray. And, uh, we recommended to appoint Jennifer Allen to a three-year term. And then on the Historic Review Board, which, uh, you don't have to be a member of the, be a resident of the town.
Correct.
These, these other ones, you have to be a resident of the town. And we had three openings, and we recommended, uh, uh, let's see, Elizabeth, uh, Leventis.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, David Booth and Jessica Scarlett, for terms ending, well, the last one is, uh, finished out a term ending in twenty-two, the other, the first two are terms ending in twenty-twenty-three.
Good job.
And then the Planning Commission, I don't know how many, how many of these meetings y'all attend, but I used to attend almost all of them. And I've been very impressed with that board, and I like to say that when you, when they get through asking questions, there are no more questions that you can ask on that particular subject.
I don't know, I think we gave them a run for their money tonight.
But anyway, we voted to reappoint James Trainer, who's been on there a number of years, you know, very well. James is a Springs outfit, and he always excuses himself.
I think he's retired, man.
Something, something involving him coming up, which I appreciate. And also, uh, Matthew.
Luca Riley.
Luca Riley, I knew that, I just want to see if you did.
I did.
We'll hold those two, three-year terms, expire in twenty-twenty-three.
I'd like to, I sit on this committee as well, and I would like to say that, uh, through the efforts of having a new communications person, we have received an abundance of volunteers, and they are wonderful. They're wonderful. It's just sad that we currently don't have as many openings as we do volunteers. So we did look very carefully and are discussing, you know, the potential to create another type of committee that, uh, a citizens committee or something, that we could reach down and bring to these folks that are willing, uh, to serve. So I, I'd like to thank everyone that made the effort to communicate it and then to actually fill out a volunteer form, because that's incredible, that's incredible. So we have a motion on the table to approve and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. All right, then. Uh, that finishes our business items, there are no information discussion items, uh, there's no executive session. So, um, I'll, um, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I made a motion to adjourn.
I have a second, I have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much, have a great week.